Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 7, 2022 regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting this meeting from the City Council chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. Pursuant to Government Code Sections 54953B, the public will have the opportunity to address the City Council at the teleconference location. All votes during the teleconferencing session will be conducted by roll call vote. This is all moot now actually because Councilmember Darling is here joining us at the dais. There was a possibility she'd be joining us remotely. So moving on. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications." This is for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that's on the agenda this evening. And consistent with our City Council handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated for public communications on items that are not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, which will alert the city clerk that you have a comment that you would like to make. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raise hand feature or state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you're here, joining us in person, again, welcome. Please fill out a yellow speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city practices related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live, remote, public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID and password are... The ID is 85743241524. Again, the ID is 85743241524. And the passcode is 694787. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, visit the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; cable broadcast, Comcast Channel 28, Rossmore Channel 26, Wave Channel 1028, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream online on the city's website. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Here.
Mayor Francois?
Here. At this time, I'm going to present a proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth. So I'll be traveling over to the lectern and inviting Mary Taylor, who's a member of our DEI Task Force, and also a member of the African Americans and Friends of Rossmore Club, to join me at the lectern. You brought reinforcements. I like it.
I did.
Support. I have a proclamation here, and this is the first time the city has recognized June 19th as Juneteenth. It became a national holiday last year, as many of you know, and many of you may not know the story behind Juneteenth. It was in September of 1862 that President Abraham Lincoln officially ended slavery by changing the status of more than 3.5 million enslaved African Americans in the Confederate States of America. So that was in September of 1862. But it wasn't until June of 1865, two years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, that Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, to inform enslaved Americans that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed. Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day or Emancipation Celebration and Freedom Day, is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Juneteenth represents freedom, as well as how the emancipation was tragically delayed for enslaved people in the deepest reaches of the Confederacy. This is a painful chapter in American history that also serves as an opportunity for us to recommit ourselves to combat all forms of modern-day slavery, human trafficking, and racial injustice, as well as to continue to fight for freedom. Whereas the City of Walnut Creek commemorates the anniversary of Juneteenth in recognition and celebration of the great contributions African Americans have made to the United States, to California, and to the City of Walnut Creek. And now therefore, I, Matt Francois, is mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and encourage the opportunity to honor and reflect on the significant role that African Americans have played in the history of the United States and how they have enriched society through their steadfast commitment to promoting unity and equality.
So, thank you very much. On behalf of the African American and Friends Club and the Black Lives Matter Committee of Rossmore, we gratefully accept this proclamation. We'd like to thank the city for recognizing the importance of celebrating diversity and inclusion as we all learn more about and embrace our country's history, both the struggle and the successes. As a member of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force of Walnut Creek, it's an honor to support the city's efforts to realize an environment that seeks to understand cultural differences so that everyone in Walnut Creek feels safe, welcome, and a sense of belonging, as we are stronger together. So, thank you again to the...
I'd invite my council colleagues to join me.
Maybe. Oh, come back.
Now, as they're coming, a couple of these people have been residents of Walnut Creek for over 20 years.
Please take your time to introduce yourselves. Thank you for being here.
Olivia Hariford, resident since 1980.
Harleen Hollis, resident for 12 years.
Sandra Abram, resident since 1985.
Charles Edward Richardson, resident in and out for 10 years.
You're in now. That's the council. Beautiful. Social media's no match for the official. I wanted to point out Andre Segovia from our DEI Task Force. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Does any member of the public wish to comment on an item that's on the consent calendar this evening? If you're here in the chamber, please feel free to come up to the lectern, and if you're joining us by Zoom and would like to comment on any item on the consent calendar, now is the time to please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio
We have no members of Zoom wanting to comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and then I entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to adopt the consent calendar items 2A through 2J with the amendment for the Animal Services Contract. There was a minor correction, which is item 2E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is public communications. This portion of the meeting, again, is reserved for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to comments and statements made and questions posed. Again, in accordance with our council handbook, we've allocated 30 minutes of time for public communications on items not on the agenda. An additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. So if you're here in person, as I noticed some people are doing already, please line up near the lectern and we'd love to hear your comments. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you'd like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda. Right now, I notice it's 6:13, so we will take comments on items that are not on the agenda until 6:43, and then if there are any other members of the public that still wish to provide comments, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. And we will take it away, Mr. Bennett. Good evening.
My name's Pete Bennett. I've lived in the county for 44 years now. I've endured a lot of harm, a lot of tragedy, arson, fires, extortion, racketeering, and murders. I've tried to work with the council. I go back and forth being really ticked to just walk away. The document I'm giving you tonight is part of the problem that's been festering. It's called the trust forgery, and it involves your attorneys, and it involves my grandfather's client, which is something that popped up. Most people don't know who I am, but I come from a New York family, and I'm looking for the picture, if I can find it. My grandfather represented some powerful people. One of them was David Rockefeller. I used to have brunch at his house, little kid. The other one was Joseph Kennedy. And somebody came out and gave me some information about three years ago and told me, asked me some questions about my grandfather, and I started to think about it. And then I realized why my grandmother never talked about my grandfather's death. Took about six months, but they gave me the information that triggered me to look it up. My grandfather also represented the Kennedy family, and it's highly probable that they killed him in '62 and then killed his client, the president. You wonder what I've been through? Bar fights with George Bush in 1975. This is David Rockefeller. And the trusts that I'm handing them is/was managed by David Rockefeller for 35 years, and I'm out millions of dollars. Stonewalt here in Walnut Creek for years.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Next speaker.
Here. Thank you.
Mark Joffe, 1655 North California Boulevard, Walnut Creek. It seems to me that more people are camping on the streets of Walnut Creek recently. On Sunday, I saw three people camping within two blocks of my home on North California Boulevard. I took pictures and posted about the situation on Nextdoor. Within one day, the post collected 115 supportive reactions before it was taken down. As I noted in my post, Walnut Creek has a lot of perpetually vacant retail space, such as the units across from Trader Joe's on South California Boulevard. According to data from John Comerlich and Associates, there is a 21.9% vacancy rate for retail properties west of North and South California, so it looks like we have space to temporarily shelter people living on our streets. I suggest that the city, perhaps working with a nonprofit, rent some of the space and insist that campers move from the sidewalks into these facilities. San Francisco, Berkeley, and Oakland have developed terrible reputations for public disorder as unhoused individuals create unhygienic and threatening conditions. Because Walnut Creek is easily accessible by bart, we should be on guard against the risk of more transients migrating to our community. We know that the countywide point-in-time count showed a 35% increase in unhoused individuals between 2019 and 2022. Let's not allow the situation on our streets to continue deteriorating. Please implement a cost-effective solution to reduce street camping as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joffe. Next speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live at 1655 North California Boulevard. I'm a homeowner, and I'm experiencing also, as the person that was here before me, that there's been a great increase in homelessness here in the city. And for instance, one day, this was about a month ago, I was coming out of 1655 North California Boulevard, and we have these big containers where we keep things for recycling. I saw an individual just throw everything on the floor outside, on the walkway, actually, and I called someone and they cleaned it up. This is just one example. I used to work in San Francisco, South of Market, and I'm really very concerned about my beloved city of Walnut Creek. I don't want it to become something like South of Market. I think many times, people don't react and don't do anything because they said, "That will never happen to us," but I think we need to take action now before it gets out of control. And a very compassionate woman, individual, I just want some permanent solution to this problem. And I know it's not all the fault of the City of Walnut Creek because I know the regular people that are on the street. I've been here for many years. But I've seen a huge increase of people that probably come from Berkeley and most likely from San Francisco, because San Francisco is deserted right now, especially downtown. So they're coming here, and I just hope that the city works together with nonprofits to house these individuals and do not allow people to camp on the street. Thank you very much for your time.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Maria Gioia, G-I-O-I-A. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gioia, for coming tonight. Next speaker.
Jan Warren. I have a couple of things I wanted to just mention because I didn't make the May 17 meeting with the budget information and so forth. So I looked through it. I've been out canvassing and doing everything for the election phone making, so I'm not quite up to snuff here with my notes. But I looked at the ARPA funds that we have been primarily spending for police, extra hours, new police, library hours, and crossing guards. And it appears as though we're just kind of moving that money. I think we have to spend it by 2024. You know, we're just moving it every year forward, and I'd like to see some of it spent for something else. You're hearing people talk about the homeless issue that we continue to have. There was an internal city homelessness response team that was created with the departments in the city, and when Margot left and you had the shortage of staff, it kind of, you know, just was put on hold for a while. And now I see that, I don't know who Schwab is, I know who Knox is, that they're the leads on this committee and that this, in June 2022, they're going to be doing some work on training and so forth. So I'd like to remind people the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force is an ongoing task force that we weren't included in on any of this, and we would like to be included. Lastly, we have five priority for the city, one of which is environmental sustainability and the Climate Action Plan. And I looked through the positions, and I'm not clear both, I know we have a couple, you know, the... Oh, boy. Anyway, we have a couple new directors, but I'm not clear, looking at the budget, who, where these positions are, just numbers for the climate and the housing person for Margot's position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any other speakers here in the chamber would like to address the council on public communications, items not on the agenda? I'm okay. I'm not seeing any. We'll turn to Zoom.
We do have a hand raised on Zoom. We'll bring in Barbara Guinness.
Hello. My name is Barbara Guinness. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. I just wanted to make sure that you knew about the response to the question I had regarding enforcement for illegal one-wheeled electric vehicles and motorcycles in the Lime Ridge open space. I brought this up in the 517 City Council meeting. I have a couple of answers from Public Works, and they were saying in regards to my question, unenforcement is complicated, and general enforcement is a responsibility of the Police Department. But Public Works has been meeting with the Police Department to try to come up with a plan to work together, but this plan's in the beginning stages, so I think they're saying there's no enforcement. They also said city staff will not be sharing our specific petroleum enforcement strategies with the general public. Not sure what that meant. Anyway, I just submitted, there's going to, you'll see, we have a packet, and there'll be some emails with back and forth, about two emails between myself and Public Works, talking about the one-wheeled vehicles and motorcycles. And there was a lack of police response for the motorcycles. One of my neighbors called and police never responded to it. And then also, you'll see in the emails, there was no response to a online report. I understand police are busy, so anyway, I just wanted to mention that, though. So we're supposed to go to the police, but they may be too busy to come. Also, I attached a couple pictures of two party sites that have been observed up right around the open space, right around the houses, alcoholic drinks, plus there's showing of a campfire up there. I have a few pictures. So I just wanted you, the mayor and council members, to know that there's prohibited activities occurring in Lime Ridge open space, and with severe drought and severe and extreme drought conditions, these prohibited activities can cause a wildfire. And recently, many homeowners received news that some of their insurance companies that don't want to insure them because of the wildfire risk right around the open space. So with so many homes and residents in surrounding areas, it's important that some form of perhaps educational enforcement at least.
Thank you, Ms. Guinness. Any other speakers on Zoom?
No, there are no additional hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public communications, and then I'll turn to my colleagues. I'd heard some comments about homelessness, and perhaps the city manager can discuss some of the programs and policies the city has implemented, and then if a resident had a concern, who they would call to address that.
Dan Buckshai, city manager. In terms of homeless, yes, we do partner with not-for-profits to provide homeless service, including a day center with Trinity Day Center, as well as an overnight shelter. In terms of if you see any folks camping or setting up a semi, you know, semi-permanent spot on the sidewalk or elsewhere, I would recommend calling the non-emergency police department number at 925-943-5844. We do have two police officers dedicated to our homeless outreach program that can coordinate with our homeless providers and touch base with the individuals to hopefully find them alternative means for housing.
I appreciate you mentioning the Homeless Outreach Patrol, and then ARPA funds were also raised, and wasn't it that we've used some of the ARPA funds to get dedicated full-time county corps team staff to help with homeless outreach?
Yes, that's correct. During the pandemic, there wasn't, you know, an uptick in homelessness throughout the region. Interestingly enough, the point-in-time count for Walnut Creek showed that our numbers actually dropped a bit, which was a bit surprisingly, but in the region, no doubt it's up, and obviously, it's a transient population, which is difficult to count at any point in time. But yes, we did double the amount of resources from social workers that are dedicated to working on homelessness with the use of the federal stimulus funds. Instead of one social worker dedicated to Walnut Creek, we have two, so 80 hours worth of folks working in the community to make contact with homeless in an attempt to try to get them into housing, to become self-supportive, and obviously, get off the street. So they work closely with our homeless outreach program, police officers, in order to try to get folks help and off the street.
Thank you, Mr. Buckshai. And then on the question regarding ARPA funds that Ms. Warren had, the reports, I recall, were pretty detailed and have been, we've been pretty transparent in terms of how those funds have been used. If there are more detailed questions, who could Ms. Warren contact about those?
She could contact our Administrative Services Director, Kirsten LaCasse.
I think I captured most of the comments, but I'll turn to my colleagues and see if there are any follow-ups.
I just wanted to add in, the corps team can be accessed, if you have somebody that you're concerned about, that you're seeing on the street, you can access them by calling 211, which is the emergent, the number to get to homeless services with the county. So 211 is a good way, if you have somebody that you want the corps team to reach out to.
Thank you, Councilmember Darling. And so with that, then, we'll turn to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. We did not have closed session, so we have no closed session announcements tonight, and city manager reports.
I do not have an update this evening, mayor.
Okay. Well, moving right along to council member reports on their activities, which I believe have been numerous over the past few weeks. We haven't met in three weeks. Who would like to lead us off?
I can do that.
Okay. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, mayor, and thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. It's nice to see so many people here in our council chambers. These reports are really designed to inform my colleagues, our colleagues, as well as the public on what we do, not just on every other Tuesday night. I am a member of the Board of the Two County East Bay Public Safety Radio System Authority, and we have just finalized our 2022-23 budget, and I am pleased to report that there's no change in the per radio fee that all of the cities and the counties and the other public agencies will be paying, which is good for the budget. I'm also with Councilmember Francois, a member of the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority Board, so this is known as Recycle Smart. It's basically your three bins and who's picking it up and managing the processing. And at our May meeting, it was very interesting because we honored the four high school students who have been working as interns through the authority. who have been working as interns through the authority and gave them scholarships to go on to college. And it was inspiring because they have all done some really interesting work at their school sites on reuse, recycling, et cetera. And so they are the future, and we are very fortunate of what the future holds. Councilmember Darling and I are members of the Housing Community Development Committee, and we heard the, we had a hearing about four weeks back for the Community Development Block grant funds that come from the federal government. And there are 27 grants that the council will be looking at, I think at our next meeting. But it was also inspiring on what the nonprofits are doing, and including the Trinity Center and others who are working in our region on homeless issues. Speaking of homeless issues, the Trinity Center had its annual fundraising gala about three weeks ago, I think it was. They held it at the Ruth Bancroft Garden, so it was a great way for two nonprofits to basically work together. I think they did, they were very successful in their fundraising. And it helps Trinity Center support the work that they provide as day center services for those who are unhoused, as well as the working poor. On Sunday, the Walnut Creek Historical Society showcased our Shadlands Ranch Museum, which is an historic building in Walnut Creek. It is on the National Registry of Historic Places. They had a classic car show, which, when the, there were no cars when the Shadlands Ranch was first built, but they had some vintage cars and they had some great 1950s, 60s, and 70s vehicles. Councilmember? Wilk? I can't remember anybody's names. Okay, he's got a mask on. I can't remember. So he was there as well and presenting the awards on behalf of the council. So thank you for doing that. But I really wanted to emphasize that it wasn't just fun because it was a classic car show, but it also demonstrated and showcased our historic location. And thank you to the Historical Society for their work. And over the last few weeks, I've had the opportunity to do some continued traveling around the state in my capacity for the League of California Cities. And in both presentations that I participated in, there were presentations from the Governor's Office about the proposal for the care court system, which is an element of helping those who are in need and underhoused. And I think I will leave it there. There were a lot of other, Aquanuts, Cancer Support Community, the Art and Wine Festival, but I'll leave it there.
Sounds good. Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. As Councilwoman Ber Silva mentioned, the Housing Community Development, we went through the grants, and you're going to see about $750,000 of grants that we're recommending to, for a wide variety of things across the area. I too went to the Trinity Center fundraiser, which was a great evening and a great chance to catch up with all the people that work on homelessness. But I also spent the rest of the time traveling, but not around the state. I went over with friends and family to Europe. And three big takeaways. One is, we are really not set up for bikes here compared to there. I was blown away by the bike parking in the University Town of Ghent at the train station. It was three stacked, three deep, and thousands of bikes. It was pretty amazing. The other thing that struck me, we were touring a fortress that had traded hands between one country and another. And the guide was illustrating this by putting out a series of little flags. Well, when he got to the Nazi occupation, he just had a brown square of cloth. And he said that was because it was against the law in Germany to display a Nazi flag outside. And so they used just this brown square of cloth. I thought that was an interesting way of dealing with this. And the other interesting thing, it's just interesting to see your country through other people's eyes. I was asked numerous times by people whether or not the United States was safe, and their perception is just very different from how I feel on a day-to-day basis. But it was, it was very interesting. So anyway, we're back. I'm COVID negative, and I'm ready to go to work. So thank you.
Excellent. Let's turn to our other international traveler, councilmember Haskew.
Yeah, I essentially took the same trip, only I took it a little before councilmembers, Darling. Amsterdam is an amazing place in terms of bicycles. They have the right of way over everything, and you take your blinkin' life in your hands trying to cross the street. Because if it wasn't bad enough trying to watch for all the bicycles, there are also trail railways in the middle of the street. So those of us that are concerned about falling and breaking hips, we had to pay attention to those railways as well. But it is interesting to hear about our country and see how alike and how different they are to our society. Saw some pretty incredible playground equipment, saw some other things that I took pictures of that I'm going to mention to the city staff as time goes on. Because I think, we all think we're the cutting edge of everything, but quite frankly, I saw some things in Europe that really make us look like we're sitting on our hands. It was well worth the trip, and I am so happy to be home.
And also COVID negative, right?
Why, yes, I am. I had to spit in little tubes to prove it.
Excellent. Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. Well, my international travel comes later this summer, and I'll report from the other side of the globe on that one. As Mayor Protem Silva had mentioned, there was a lot going on over the last few weeks. One of which, I sit on the committee for the Board of Directors of the County Connection, and we have just approved a summer youth discount program. So the idea is that we're going to get, again, more people as we can into public transit. It's no surprise to anybody, we are down significantly from pre-COVID numbers on BART, on all public transit. There are more cars on the road now than there were prior to COVID, even though there are fewer jobs that people are going into the office for. San Francisco, my daughter works in San Francisco. She lives in San Francisco. She works at a big, a big building with a lot of people, and she's been once in the last six months. And that's what's going on. And so people are just in their cars more. We're doing whatever we can. And this is across all of the transportation in the region, as I'm sure Councilmember Haskew can testify as well to. We're doing whatever we can to get people to feel comfortable and get out of their cars and back on public transit. $7 gallon gas probably will help that matter as well, as well as critical mass, just from the fact of people spending more and more time on the road, too. So a lot of discussion on that. Mayor Protem Silva did mention the cancer support community in the Hopewalk, and I also attended that. Mayor Protem Silva gave an extremely emotional, personal account of cancer support, which was appreciated by everybody and spoke on behalf of the council there. There was a, again, our annual Memorial Day ceremony. Terrific to be in person. The mayor, of course, led that, again, as the mayor does every year. And it was, it was terrific to see that amount of people and really being able to honor our veterans. And I don't know if the mayor has more to say on that, but I will let him if he does. There, on the third anniversary of Miles Hall's death, there was a walk for Miles Hall and a mental health rally that was at Civic Park. I attended that, and it was really a beautiful evening, weather-wise and also just a great outpouring of people as well. Really show, and it was really regarding mental health as much as anything else, and what we need to do more about mental health. And this was in the aftermath of the horrific shooting in Texas and in Buffalo, and all the ones in between as well. And how we can address mental health more. And that's really what the rally was signifying. This happened on the night of the Warriors' first game, so to have that many people out on that night was really amazing. The Art and Wine Festival, terrific to see that again, thanks to Bob Lynchide and the entire team at Chamber of Commerce. Three years, long years, we waited to have that back in person. Great to see. And it really feels like we are getting back into a new version of normalcy, but one that we're all familiar with prior to 2020. Mayor Protem mentioned the Historical Society Car Show. That was terrific. If anybody didn't get there, go next year. It really is amazing. The best in car that, or I should say, the best in show that won was a 1928 Pontiac, and it was beautiful. That was probably just about 10 years after the Shadlands Ranch house, right? Something like that? But a beautiful car. Anyway, it's probably the most underrated event that happens in Walnut Creek annually that really people, every time they go, they say, I should be going here every year. And then last but not least, yesterday, councilmember Haskew and I were part of the Downtown Next Ad-Hoc Committee on how is downtown going to be looking in the future, and how are these, all of the outdoor dining going to look? And a lot of that's going to be coming to council in the next few weeks. You'll definitely want to be paying attention. So more to come on that one. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. And I too, I appreciate all that you're doing for our city and our residents. I had the privilege of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Troop 227, and was able to recognize three young men, Robbie Finkel, Ryan Bennett, and Hunter Pingstaff, as well as their scout master, Tovey, sorry, Tony Zavonelli. The three young men had kind of all done projects, the Eagle Projects, as many who are familiar with Boy Scouts are, where they supervise it and oversee it, but actually don't do the work themselves. So it's a real life lesson in term of organizing people and getting people to do work and show up when they're supposed to show up. So great life skills there. And just want to thank them for the evening that I got to spend with them, and Mr. Zavonelli in particular, for not only helping these three young men, but 12 other young men achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. I had the privilege of also attending the Lesser Center, the DRAA Announcement and Donor Appreciation Event, where they were rolling out the carpet for this year's season. There are a lot of exciting presenters. We've got Broadway-quality shows and musical performances, and old favorites like Christmas Carol is coming back. So check out their website. They have really, really fun things offering and a variety and a diversity of offerings, from taking acrobats to the Dance Theater of Harlem, to a Fiesta Cultural, and then also having, you know, the Christmas Carol, as I mentioned. Let's see, last week, I attended the Mayor-a-thon event at Merwood Elementary. It's actually a walkathon, but since I was there, they elevated it to a marathon, and it was pretty cute. They're elementary students that have participated in the walking club at school. And over the course of this school year, these four young men had walked four marathons, so 520 laps around the track at Merwood. There's parent volunteers, and they're really pleased. I signed a lot of shirts. I felt like I was a celebrity. And it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. And I want to point out that it was Luca Valeriano, Rohan Tesfi, Gavin Curdie, and Essie, I'm going to get this wrong, Gebra Michael. As Councilmember Wilk pointed out, it was an honor to preside over the Memorial Day service at Civic Park. Very poignant and moving service. And the keynote speaker was Mary Tollifson, who's a Gold Star mom who lost her son Ben in Iraq in 2008. Ben was a graduate of Berean Christian High School. And, you know, she talked about the importance of always saying his name, not letting his name fade from memory, and understanding and underscoring, I mean, it really provides a very real and poignant example of the sacrifices that our military, men and women, have made for our freedom. After Memorial Day, I attended the Mayor's Conference. That was coincidentally scheduled during a Warriors' game, but I was, I did attend the Mayor's Conference, and there was a lot of discussion about banning flavored tobacco. And Walnut Creek was recognized as one of the cities in our community that has already taken that action to ban flavored tobacco. The following day, I was here at City Hall bright and early with several members of the DEI Task Force to recognize the beginning of Pride Month and the raising of the Pride flag. Did make it to the Art and Wine Festival on Sunday, and that was a fun event. It was good to see a lot of people out and about. And then just this morning, the city manager and I, as well as Angela Sway from our Economic Development Team, continuing our business visitation program, have gone out and met with several business owners from mom-and-pops to international companies around the city. And today, we were out at Honey Point 3D in the Shadlands, and I had a 3D image of myself printed, so I'll share that all with you at a future meeting or post it on Facebook. I'm not sure how big it'll be. But they had to do it a few times because I was talking and smiling. They said, don't say anything, just let me do the 3D printing. So that is my update. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing on the Oakmont of Shadlands Senior Housing and Residential Care Facility at 1925 Oak Road, Oak Grove Road and 2800 Mitchell Drive. It's application Y20-03. And before we start the staff report, are there any ex parte contacts, any, that the council members would like to disclose?
I have had one conversation in the last six months and one other meeting about 16 months ago with the developer.
I was at the 16-month-ago developer meeting.
None for me.
None for me? And none for Councilmember Darling? Okay, then we'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Ms. Vandenbrand. Welcome for the staff presentation.
Hello. Thank you very much. Very happy to be here. I would like to introduce our planner, Jessica Gonzalez, to be able to talk about the Oakmont Project and backing her up. We have a team here to help support that, support her. So with that, Jessica, if you could please come to the front? I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Will you go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jessica Gonzalez, Associate Planner here with the city, and I will be presenting the Oakmont of Shadlands project. So just getting started with some existing site context, the project does include, oop, sorry, two parcels. They're outlined on the screen. That's 2800 Mitchell Drive and 1925 Oak Grove Road. And so the project with the star is 2800 Mitchell Drive, and that is the former Joint Genome Institute, and that is where all the development is proposed. So I'll just refer to that as the project site. And so the other parcel is developed with a self-storage facility. That's 1925 Oak Grove Road, and no development is proposed on that site. The general plan for both parcels is BP, and they're both located within the Shadlands Pacific Park, and they are also zoned with the same PD.
Ms. Gonzalez, welcome.
Thank you.
If you can, with the mask, if you can just keep your voice up a little bit. It filters your voice a little bit.
Sorry.
It's a little hard to hear. No problem at all.
So just moving into the project request. So the project includes a proposal to develop the project site with a 254-unit senior apartment development, and that would be age-restricted to 55 and up. And then also a 136-bed residential care facility, and I'll refer to that as an RCFE. So now going through the required entitlements, there are quite a few, starting with the general plan amendments. There's a proposal to modify the general plan designation for the project site from BP, that's Business Park, to MUR, that's Mixed Use Residential, and that would be needed to allow the residential and RCFE uses, which are currently not allowed in the BP. There is a MUR text amendment to introduce a new FAR, and then a text amendment to the BP to address a shared FAR condition, which I'll describe in a few slides. There's also a specific plan amendment proposed, and that is to remove the project site from the Shadlands Business Park, or specific plan. And there's also a rezon- And there's also a rezoning, or two rezonings proposed, to create two separate PDs. Some tree removal permits. They're proposing to remove 105 trees from the site. There's also a design review and parcel map proposed. And so, the project has been before the DRC and Planning Commission, which have both provided a positive recommendation on the RCFE and residential apartments. So, if the starred entitlements on the screen are approved, the project would still need to go back to the DRC for a final approval of the design review, and then the ZA for that parcel map. And so, if the general plan and specific plan were approved by the council, 1925, shown in blue, that would remain within the Business Park and the Shadelands specific plan, and that would also have a new zoning. The other site, that's the project site, that would, that general plan designation would change from BP to MUR, and that would no longer be within the Shadelands specific And so, the BP text amendment is shown in bold on the screen. So, currently, the general plan allows for a shared FAR when, when two parcels are located in the same PD. And so, once that, once the two parcels are separated out into their own PDs, that would create an FAR issue for the self-storage, because it has a .7 FAR, where only .5 is allowed. So, this amendment would address the potential issue with the general plan. And so, getting into the MUR text amendment, the proposed project FAR is 1.1, and the amendment would introduce a second FAR range of 1 to 2 for parcels located outside of the core area. The project site would be the only MUR site located outside of the core area. And so, that 1 to 2 range would apply to the project, but no other sites. And so, there are a few other miscellaneous text amendments, and that's really just to ensure consistency with the general plan. They include simple things like removing references to the Joint Genome Institute, and then removing the project site from the Shadelands map. And so, getting into the new PD zoning districts, so the new PD for the storage facility would just simply document the removal of 2800 Mitchell. And the new PD for the project site would outline all of the development standards. And those standards would include a unique definition of base elevation, which would alter how we measure height, but the project would still comply with the 40-foot measuring height limit. And there is some precedence for using this PD definition. This was done with the Hilton Plan Development, and that definition of base elevation was used for that project. And the PD also includes a requirement for public benefit in the form of 1% of construction costs as well. And so, as I mentioned, the project includes the removal of 105 existing trees, which are shown in red on the screen, six of which are highly protected and have a total appraised value of $17,050. If those tree removals were approved, the project applicant would be required to pay that total into our in lieu fee, which would be used to replant trees off-site. And so, that was just some general background on the project itself and entitlements, not going over some back, or getting into the background, sorry. So, in 2019, the council reviewed the general proposal to introduce residential senior apartment and RCFE into the Shadelands. And at that time, the council provided feedback, including allowing the project to move forward with environmental review. They also provided some parameters around when residential use should be allowed in the Shadelands, and that included only, only parcels that are 750 feet within YVR and Oak Grove Road, and also including a maximum of 10% of the Shadelands area for any residential use. And I'll just note that the Oakmont project does comply with both of those parameters, and it only occupies 5% of the Shadelands' total acreage. And so, as described in the staff report, the project has been before the Design Review Commission and Planning Commission twice. Most recently, it went before the Planning Commission, where they noted support for the use, and they also acknowledged that the changes that were made to the site plan did address their concerns around connectivity with the courtyards, outdoor space activation, and pedestrian connectivity between buildings. They also noted support for requiring some form of off-site public benefit, and ultimately forwarded their positive recommendation for adoption of the MND and entitlements to council. And so, here is, here are the footprints, really just highlighting some of those changes that were made. So, at the top of the screen, that is the footprint of the buildings before the breezeways were added, and then at the bottom, that's with the breezeways and improved connectivity. And so, this is just the updated site plan, showing those new breezeway areas and connected pedestrian pathways. And so, again, the staff report summarizes the DRC comments from those meetings that were had, and some of those changes that were made to the architecture. I just included the elevations. So, the top elevation is the initial design that was reviewed by the DRC, and then the bottom is the most recent, with some of their comments incorporated. And so, just quickly, some of the proposed plans and renderings. This is the rendering for the senior apartment, the most recent one. And then, here are the renderings for the RCFE. And then, with respect to the environmental review and SEQA, a negative, mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for the project. That comment period ran, and no comments were received. And then, that document did conclude that with appropriate mitigation measures, the project would avoid or reduce impacts, impacts to less than significant levels, and those measures are incorporated into the resolutions. And so, with that, staff does recommend that the city council consider all information presented in the record, bear with me, move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program resolution, adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment and specific plan amendment, adopt a resolution approving a tree removal permit and tree drip line encroachment permit, and introduce and waive further reading of the PD ordinance for 1925 Oak Grove and 2800 Mitchell, including the requirement for public benefit. That does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Very nicely done, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
To think, that was a lot of information to cover.
Yes.
Appreciate that. You know, unless any of my council members have any burning questions, I thought it might be helpful to hear from the applicant first, and then we could ask questions of the applicant or staff at that time.
Mayor Francois, councilmembers, I'm Deb Carbo with Hall Equities Group. Can you hear me okay? And I'm joined here tonight by Oakmont and the entire project team, including our land use council, so that we can answer any of your questions. So, we'll get right into it. I'm going to try and not repeat anything that Jessica already told you. I know you'll appreciate that. Starting with, oops, starting with the Shadelands, it's, you know the Shadelands Business Park, 3.2 million square feet. There's a long history of efforts to resuscitate the Shadelands. There's been chronic vacancy. I don't think it's ever really had a healthy occupancy in terms of office R&amp;D. Definitely, medical is doing well. Office R&amp;D is the only use that's consistent with the specific plan number two in the BP zoning. And so, every new project that's been built out here has required a general plan amendment or PD zoning, or additional zoning. So, we tried to find a replacement tenant for JGI when they vacated. We actually started a couple of years before they vacated, because we had noticed they were building a building. And we had no success. We tried biotech, we tried office, and without success. So, we looked to uses that would complement what's already in the Shadelands, and we came up with senior housing. Why senior housing? Well, the demographics are perfect for it. In Walnut Creek, you have an older median age. Even taking out Rossmore, it's still a higher median age. There's significant demand. Your senior facilities are at capacity. There are benefits. Traffic doesn't generate, or seniors don't drive generally during peak times, and they don't affect school boundaries. And when a senior downsizes, they open up their home to others that want to come into Shadelands. And then, the Shadeland synergies are obvious. Seniors are patients at the nearby medical, and they spend money. They shop and dine at nearby restaurants and businesses. I wanted to add this because it's basically a comparison with Viamonti. We have lower height, less FAR, but more importantly on these issues is that Viamonti is an ownership product with a buy-in, serving a higher-income senior, and Oakmont is a rental product, and their buy-in is, is a security deposit. So, we're serving different communities, so we feel like they really complement one The changes, okay, don't worry, I'm not going to go into each of these, but those are the changes. But we will go into the major ones. We moved stairways at the end of all the corridors to create windows to bring light into the courtyards. This is one of the big changes. We went to a single-loaded corridor on Building B2 so that we could expand the courtyard, and we added pass-throughs. And not to be minimized, a big deal was, the fire department wanted us to eliminate landscaping under windows, and Oakmont's a huge fan of landscaping, so they had to change the construction type from 5A to 3A. This is an image of the pass-throughs, and this is the same image that Jessica showed you, but the important thing, I think, here is that you, you've still got three-story buildings to provide a nice transition into the site. Images she already showed you, all of these, actually. All of the interior spaces have seating throughout, so they really try to encourage the residents to spend time outside and enjoy the property. The rec center, we made similar changes. We added windows. We can come back to this if you'd like to. The expanded walkways around the pool. The residential care facility, didn't really get a lot of comments. Everybody seemed pretty pleased with it from the get-go. We did change the architecture to, you know, similar to the apartment changes, and we improved walking paths. More renderings. Parking. We have 548 stalls, 350 of which are underground. Every resident has a stall underground, and then the elevator takes them up to their room. And we'll talk about this in a minute, but the underground parking, you know, gives us more room for landscaping. Again, Oakmont's a big advocate of landscaping. The pedestrian connectivity, in addition to the 10-foot sidewalk on the project frontage, all the interior sidewalks were increased to 5 feet, and we improved access. We've kind of gone into that, so I won't go into, I won't belabor it. I added this because, Councilmember Wilk, you mentioned county connection. There's six bus stops on Mitchell, so the residents here can get around town without driving. This is the connectivity within Shadelands. The residents can walk down Oak Grove on the sidewalk, or there is a 10-foot access easement that was dedicated at the sports mall, connecting Mitchell Drive to Shadelands Drive, so they can get pretty much anywhere in the park relatively easy. This is just an image of the quality of Oakmont properties, and I wanted to include it as just kind of a collage of their properties. These are amenities, and without going in, going into each amenity, the main thing here is that it's a beautiful facility, and it's like a country club without the golf course. We, we are taking out some trees. Jessica went into it, but what's important is that we're going to have 659 trees with the project, 498 of which are 24- and 36-inch box trees. I want to note that most of these trees are being removed for the, primarily for the underground garages. Community benefit, that's what we've been wanting to talk about. So, before we get into community benefit, I just want to ask the question, should the community benefit be waived in the Shadelands because it conflicts with longstanding efforts to revitalize the park? In 2015, the P-Bid was formed, and all the owners are already taxed annually to improve a challenged business park. In 2016, there were minor adjustments with the P-Bid in concert with the city to improve occupancy on the zoning. In 2019, the 1% art fee was waived for a couple of years to help folks in the Shadelands. The business park, like I mentioned, has never really had a healthy occupancy as it relates to office and R&amp;D, and we think the additional impact fee will actually deter further solutions in the Shadelands. Rents in the Shadelands don't support the cost of new construction. The leasing of space to date has been primarily because of the low rents. One of our planning commissioners in a law firm mentioned that. So, I'd like to mention the non-quantifiable community benefits with the project. This promotes the purposes of SB 743, which encourages land use patterns that put people near where they need to travel each day. It serves the needs of senior residents in Walnut Creek. It alleviates traffic concerns on YVR. It helps address the housing crisis. There is still employment, particularly in the RCFE, and the Walnut Creek Climate Action Plan specifically states it looks to the Shadelands Business Park to develop innovative ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We think this is pretty innovative. The project also avoids problems for the city in terms of potential blight. It absorbs vacant space and replaces functionally, and functionally obsolete buildings, and there's others in the Shadelands that are similar. This is the quantifiable benefits. The P-Bid today is $13,005. With the project, it's going to be $35,000. The property tax assessment today, now this is just based on the 1%, nothing more, so the city's 8% of the 1% today is $8,200, and with the project, based on, we'll go into it in a sec, the, the valuation that the city uses, it's about $105,000 a year. So, the $119,000 incremental difference between what it is today versus what it'll be with the project is going to be worth is going to be worth about $1,003,000 in just 10 years. The staff recommended that any requirement for public benefit generally follow the parameters for the recently approved Pioneer Village project. I was actually asking where this 1% came from. I was trying to understand that. And, and this is the project that was point to, was pointed to actually in the staff report. And so I looked it up, and I pulled that staff report, and it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's 1.37 acres. And the public benefit that was provided on that project was an additional dollar a foot for the inclusionary housing fee, $38,000 bucks, and then extending the six-foot sidewalk in front of two homes. So I don't know, and you know, I'm sure that there is some method behind the 1%, but I don't know that that necessarily reaches the 1%. So I want to be clear, we're not arguing that the property shouldn't provide community benefit or public benefit. We've been offering it all along in the intrinsic benefits, as well as other benefits that I'll share with you now. So this is the International Code Council, that is how the city values buildings. And it's, it applies a load factor, basically, of 1.24%. So the cost that you have there is already increased by the 1.24%. That gives you a building value of about $113 million. And then engineering came up with an estimate of site work of 18, just under $19 million. And so what we're suggesting is that we don't, we'd prefer it was attached to, if there is something that's attached to building valuation, that it's attached to something that we can quantify. So the applicant proposals today were to accept the benefits provided by the project and let us build the 10-foot sidewalk in front of the site. We initially said we'll perform the work to extend the sidewalk to Oak Grove. And then Oakmont said, you know what, let's just do the whole north side of the block. So they're suggesting the 10-foot sidewalk from Oak Grove, again, on the north side of Mitchell, to Wigget Lane. Based on this formula at 0.5%, one-half of 1%, that's $564,000. So we're saying that we would either pay a $564,000 cash payment or 0.5 of the building construction costs. It would be nice to have certainty as a developer upfront versus having a formula that you can't really rely on and won't know the answer to until the future. This is the 10-foot sidewalk design, right out of the multi-modal plan. It's kind of hard to breathe. With that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kamaran Shahhussani, who is from Oakmont and actually sits on the board of a bank, so he can talk about financing in current times.
Thank you, Deb. Mayor Francois, council members. Really quickly, I just wanted to appeal, appeal to your reason and see if I can provide a bit more information as to why today is a little different than when we started this project about three years ago. What, what we're seeing today, obviously, with increased interest rates and increased building costs, make even, you know, small things like half a percent on a project this size start to get a little scary for us and start putting more question marks in, in a project that we, we would really love to, to see. And we're all for being a good neighbor. We're all for being a part of this community. We have projects in Concord that are doing incredibly well, and we're very proud of. And really, I think the goal is to provide as much housing as possible, especially given the housing crisis we're in. So the, the only case I'm making, and it's through the, the finance lens because of my background, is that what's happening is for every 75, or every 50 basis points that the Fed raises the rate, and they are on course to do that two more times this year, you're looking at a essential loss of value in the project of $10 million. That's a huge number, and will eclipse making a reasonable profit on the project in, in, in due time. Could be by the end of the year. So we're really concerned, yes, every little bit starts, starts essentially raising more and more question marks. So I just wanted to share that information and, and let you know that, again, we're more than happy to be a good neighbor, to do the improvements or pay a flat fee. But we just feel like, you know, we, we want to make sure this project gets done. And I think that 1% feels a bit over. So I appreciate your time. If you have any other questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Two more slides. Okay, just real quickly, this is where we've come from. We, we met with you in November of 2019. We've made eight submittals. It's been 31 months. I don't need to tell you what we've spent so far. We believe the project is much better as a result of all the comments, and we respectfully request that you approve the project as presented and provide guidance on the community benefit assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carbo. Why don't we start with questions of, of staff, and then we'll get to the applicant in short order, I believe. What's that?
About the public.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that, if you want to. Does any, I, I think we should follow, we should follow some, some protocols here, though, at least, and, and have questions of, of staff and the applicant at this point before we open it up for the whole public comment. So any questions of staff? Okay. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentations and the detail. And Jessica, congratulations on your first presentation in front of us. Is it scary?
A little.
Let's clarify first that the mixed-use residential land use designation does allow for the residential care facility use without, I mean, that is allowed use within the MUR district?
So the project would actually be rezoned to a new PD zoning, and that PD zoning would allow the residential senior apartment development as well as the RCFE.
Is this going to be one parcel, one site, one project? Or is it two projects? I'm just a little confused in the ownership structure in the end will be.
Sorry, so there's two parcels technically that are part of the project, and that's just based on how they're zoned currently. They're both under the same PD. And so once the project moves forward, or if you were to adopt the two new PDs, they would be separated out. So that would be the storage facility. It would have its own new PD. The former Joint Genome Institute would have a new PD, and that would allow for the RCFE and senior residential development. And then after council, if the project did move forward, it would need to go to the zoning administrator to split that former joint genome site, that 2,800 Mitchell, into two sites, one, two parcels, one for the RCFE and one for the senior apartment development.
Okay. Next question may actually go to the attorney.
Okay.
So I understand the words that were in answer to my question earlier regarding why the commercial linkage fee, don't have a meltdown applicant, I just need this clarified, why the commercial linkage fee, if in fact it's going to be two, effectively two parcels and two projects, isn't applicable to the residential care facility?
The, the zoning that the council is being asked to consider today is zoning for this additional, for this one site. The subdivision of the site into two would create the two separate parcels, but you're still looking at this as one project. So it's one combined project, even though built over two parcels.
So if this were two projects, two owners, the residential care facility would be subject, as a separate project, to the commercial linkage fee?
It, it could be if there were, if they were not being processed together. They're, they're being processed as one project right now with two components.
Thank you. And Jessica, if you don't know the answer to this, perhaps someone in the audience who might speak subsequently, how many square feet of commercial space is currently in the Shadlands Business Park without the orchards? Because that has been removed from the 248 acres. And what is the vacancy rate?
I'm not sure what the vacancy rate is, but as part of that orchard's general plan designation that happened in 2014, that was a removal of approximately 25 acres of that 246. So I believe it's about 220 acres currently.
Right, but we don't know how many square feet of commercial spaces is in there. But somebody else might be able to answer it.
You know, I can speak to the vacancy rate. I don't have the square footage numbers off the top of my head. But we're looking at about roughly 15% to 17% vacancy rate in Shadlands. The Joint Genome Institute is included in that figure, the current vacant building that we're under discussion this evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So we're at 83% to 85% occupied in Shadlands, then?
Give or take. There's some discussion that's going underway right now. Actually, our economic development staff is reviewing figures with Hall Equities as part of the Shadlands Business Improvement District, Property Business Improvement District. So there'll be an upcoming meeting another month or two to reconcile some differences, but that's the ballpark.
So this is probably hard to quantify, but that figure of 15% to 17% vacancy rate, is that fair, about the norm for business areas in this environment of, on the, on the cusp of post-COVID?
You know, there's a lot of variability. Certainly, there are some increases in, in office. You know, the diversification of some of the uses has helped bring down that rate over the years in Shadlands. But I think certainly there are a lot of office parks that are, have very, very high vacancy rates, much higher than those, and some that probably are comparable.
Thank you.
Can I build on my question, then? The data we're quoting is leased space, not necessarily if the leases were expiring, whether they would, they would be renewed? In other words, what is the, the data? Is 83% have occupancy and people in it? Or is it really, do we think some of it is also on the verge of just becoming less and less tenanted?
Yeah, I don't want to speculate on what may happen. That's based on current occupancy rates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other technical questions of staff? And then I have just a few. In terms of the FAR, my understanding is the existing FAR looks at both sites, and it's about a 0.7 FAR. So when you split the two apart and you look just at joint genome, what's the FAR of that parcel?
So the FAR that's proposed is 1.1, and that will comply with that new introduced FAR of 1 to 2. And then for that other site, the existing storage facility at 1925 Oak Grove Road, that is existing at 0.7. And that does, that wouldn't comply with the general plan, which has a max of 0.5.
So do we know the existing FAR of 2,800 Mitchell?
Oh, I'm not sure what that is.
We can get to that one later. On, going to the city attorney on the impact fee question, I understand the rationale for why the project would not be subject to the inclusionary fee for the commercial component. It would be for the residential. Is there any other exemption from impact fee, other impact fees? Or would the commercial pay, would this project be subject to all other impact fees, essentially?
This project would be subject to the other impact fees that are specified in the staff report. So that's inclusionary, public art fee, transportation, those types.
Great, that's helpful. And subdivision hasn't, or these are separate part, separate legal parcels?
No, the subdivision that is anticipated would follow if the council approves the general plan amendment and the other changes. And that would simply be to create the two separate parcels so that they could, well, they can speak to that, but presumably finance them separately, sell them separately, if you will.
The self-storage in the joint genome now are separate legal parcels?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Good, we got that squared away. Let's see. Now I will open it, I actually have already opened it for public comment because I let the applicant speak. So thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I'll let you rest. I think we'll have questions for the applicant after we hear from public comment. So I'll let Ms. Carbo rest, too. Any members of the public that would like to address the council on this item now is the time. Please step forward to the lectern. And a reminder that you'll have two minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand or press star nine so that we can bring you into the queue at the appropriate time.
Apologize. Mayor Francois, members of the council. I'm Bob Lynchide, CEO for the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Bureau. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of the Shadlands Property Owners Business Improvement District, P-Bid, which is administered by the chamber on behalf of the P-Bid. The Shadlands P-Bid Committee expressed strong support for this project at the Design Review Commission over a year ago, and recently in April at the Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to represent to you a continued support for this project. The P-Bid was, was formed, as Ms. Carbo said some years ago, to ensure the health of the business park, chronic vacancy, as it's been described. The owners are unified in the support for the project because it's very complimentary to the existing uses in the park and also demonstrates an innovative approach to creating jobs in Walnut Creek's growing health sector, which I would say in, in the Shadlands, the health zoned properties are pretty full. Office project is not, not so great. This project helps to address the elevated vacancy rate at the park, and also, which is one primary objective of the, of the P-Bid. While medical uses at the Shadlands, as I've said before, continues to thrive, the office uses suffer from these chronic vacancies and functional obsolescence. The P-Bid strives to enhance private investment in order to increase economic viability of Shadlands, and we remain concerned about the cost of development, which includes the time required for approvals. Clearly, 31 months is quite a length of time. And then I'm hearing tonight, this would, approved, would go back to the Design Review Commission, which seems to be rather arduous. I've spent some time talking with staff. I appreciate the frankness and, and the adaptability to what we're trying to accomplish. But we're rather concerned about what the costs are associated with the development, not only here, but other places in, in Walnut Creek. So I want to thank you for your consideration and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynchide. Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Ed Delbaccaro. I'm just a real estate broker, and I'm representing nobody here tonight. I have worked in downtown Walnut Creek for several decades, and I've leased or sold over a million feet in Walnut Creek alone of commercial space. And as a developer, I built 22 homes out in Northgate. I was also part of the development team that built California Plaza over 360,000 feet. So I bring all those perspectives in addition to property management. So I'm here to support the senior living Oakmont project for several reasons. One, it helps housing. Two, it helps senior citizens. And it helps Shadlands Business Park. I want to emphasize that. It is a known fact that almost 55%, 60% of medical uses are used by people over 50 years old. So having more, how shall I say clinically, supply of patients in the area will actually bring more medical into Shadlands Business Park. Second, this will create the whole ecosystem of other people that will use the shopping, et cetera, as was pointed out. Now, my concern is the public benefit, not the fact of public benefit. All projects should pay some public benefit, not, not a question. The question is 1% based upon the construction numbers that are being defined here. And so I have several concerns with that. One is, right now, construction costs are increasing. Two, rents are decreasing in Shadlands in the office portion. Rents in the office portion are less than conquered. And the vacancy rate for the office portion, not R and D, not medical, is actually closer to 19% to 20% in A, B, and C categories. In fact, you know, 2,700 Ignacio has over 100,000 vacant feet alone, that, the newest building in Shadlands. building in Shadlands. A lot of the plant is obsolescent. You can't put tenants in some of those seismically challenged buildings, and you can't put medical in some of them. Then finally, I just want, you can ask me questions later. Thank you.
You can wrap up, one or two sentences.
What?
One or two sentences, wrap up, please.
Okay. So my concern is during the next two years, we're in high inflation, we're going into a possible recession, construction costs are going up. What incentives are we creating for commercial development as opposed to creating cost hurdles to prevent development in the area? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Bacaro.
My name is Mike Zilstra. I've lived and worked in Walnut Creek for the past 22 years. Like Ed, I work in the commercial real estate industry. I work for what used to be Cornershank Carry here. I focus on sales, but I did actually bring our company statistics. So the end of Q1, the vacancy rate in the Shadlands Park was 19.5%. I had looked it up, the past 12 years, it's averaged 21%. That is higher than most business parks, suburban business parks, I would say, in the East Bay and Tri Valley. Another point that Ed brought up was market rents. Market rents now are about $2.10 asking for Class A space in the Shadlands. In 1998, they were $1.95. So it is the low-cost provider in this, but there's been a lot of change, obviously, with suburban office tenants and the space available for them. We're going through rapid change right now due to COVID, and we've yet to see where that's going to play out. But I think, not I think, but I'm here to speak in support of the development. I think and applaud the city, the council staff, everyone, and the developer for having the flexibility and vision to make changes like this. You know, you've already made other major changes in the park that I think have benefited the city and its residents in many, many different ways, with the orchards as one. You know, it's a lot of amenities that the office tenants use and support, and that should help continue to draw tenants here. The sports and entertainment, wellness, health and wellness, and the medical uses that are out here. I think that's most of what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zilstra.
Boy, getting more pens and pencils every time I come up here. Shannon Warren again, and I'm not a developer, I'm not a real estate person. I can walk to the site in five minutes. I'd like to speak in support of this project, but I'd also like to use it as an opportunity for us to consider looking at our tree, highly protected tree ordinance or preservation of trees on private property. I noticed, looking at documents, that they were revised recently, 1121 and 322, and apparently that was, the sole focus was to consider ADUs and JDUs exemptions for tree removals. Walnut Creek has a list of 10 species of highly protected trees, and I don't know the benefit of highly protected trees when we just cut them down and they're just worth more dollars for us to spend elsewhere. These are, there are six highly protected trees at the development site, two are recommended to be preserved. Whether new trees will be planted or put in boxes, which then wouldn't give much habitat, four will be cut down, and it takes 10, 15 to 20 years of growth to replace the carbon sequestration, not to mention shade and air purification. I have nine trees on my maybe a quarter acre, and this is 9.5 acres. So I would like to see us in the future, look to see how can we work with developers to save these highly protected trees when they're developing on sites where things were built and planted, you know, 50 years ago or something? Because the, these projects can live or die, the trees can live or die based on city council, planning commissioners, design review commission, or zoning administrators. They have no, I had a great line here. They don't have any property rights. They're at the mercy of the people. And so I ask for us to use as an example to relook at our ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any other speakers here in the chamber who'd like to address the council on this item? Okay, do we have anyone joining us on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
We have no speakers on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to offer the applicant, I don't know that there's a lot to rebut there, but if you'd like to respond to the tree or any other issues, feel free.
I mentioned that a lot of the trees are being removed because of the underground parking, and so it's a little bit of a trade-off, but we really appreciate all the comments. We think that's what has made the project what it is today. I just want to mention one thing. I think that the brokers actually did a good job of it, but I actually did an analysis and took the uses in the Shadlands, and medical is healthy, sports mall, healthy, although the owner would say that he's had to reduce rents. But what's not healthy is just office R&amp;D. That's where you have the highest vacancy. Medical is golden, so by bringing these units, maybe we can bring more medical, and it'll be 100%.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carbo. Let's see, I may go ahead and close the public comment period then, and if there are any questions of Ms. Carbo or her team, they're here and available to answer them, but I think mostly this is a policy issue with the community benefit and whether to change the general plan zoning and specific plan, so that's really for us to deliberate and decide on.
I do have questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Will.
Thank you. No, I do have some questions actually for Deb and the applicant. I think these are anyway, some of them are in the gray area. So how many staff would be expected to work, be working in total?
We have at the RCFE 45 for a shift. That's the most on one shift. As far as the apartments, how many employees? A dozen? A dozen on the apartments.
Okay, and 45 per shift, are there three shifts then, or two shifts?
There are, but that would be the most, the shift that's the most employees.
Right.
And that's how you have to park it, on the parking requirement.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. What about affordable housing units for seniors? Will these be market rate apartments, or will they be affordable?
They're market rate, but the developer is paying the inclusionary housing fee. I think it's, I don't know what it is offhand, but significant, that'll go into the coffers of the city for inclusionary housing.
For the, okay.
Or for affordable housing.
Okay, all right, thank you. So this is a 55-plus community, and I need a little bit of understanding of what that entails. Can people under 55 live there? If somebody is over 55, then their younger spouse can live there? Children?
Do you want to progress on? I hope so.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. It's, this is actually a, the 55 and overs enshrined in both state and federal law, and it's a very specific designation, and it, I can, I'd be happy to send you the hold-on thing, but yeah, you can, there can be someone younger there living, but in general, that one person has to be.
Okay, so one person has to be 55 and over, but they could have a family as well, as long as one person's 55 and over?
That's, it gets a little bit more complicated, but for the most part, we anticipate that there's going to be, you know, two seniors 55 and over of a specific, you know, of, there might be some, you know, four or five-year difference in age, but for the most part, it's what we see in the projects that we do.
And no children?
No, no children.
No, so children are not able to move in?
No, they can, if they're, if they're, if they're a part of that family unit, they can, but it's not often that you see a child with a 55-year-old and over couple. So it's not the norm.
Okay, okay. And we heard from Mr. Del Bacaro that Shadlands has some buildings that are now obsolete. Is the Joint Genome Institute considered obsolete?
The JGI building is functionally obsolete, and that was part of the problem that we had in finding a replacement tenant. The cost to renovate the building for a biotech user can't, rent, a resulting rent, and you're competing with, you know, Emeryville and other areas. You can't afford to invest the money in the building to make it leaseable. So that's when we started searching for alternative uses.
Okay, okay. Curious how this actually works in the Oakmont. What if, or how this works in general for any kind of policy? What if at some point, Oakmont or however decided this would not be 55 plus, this, anybody can move in, or we're taking the barriers off? Would they have to come back to city to look at another general plan amendment, or how would that work?
Well, there is a deed restriction on the property, so it's already deed restricted against housing, with the exception of senior housing, and that deed restriction was put on by, I was going to say Del Monte, but Dow Chemical, sorry.
Okay.
It would also, a council member would also require an amendment because the plan development ordinance that is before you tonight is specifically for the type of development that they are proposing right now, which is an over 55 age development.
All right, thank you. And I think that's all my questions for the applicant.
Thank you.
Councilmember Haskew.
Okay, because I'm short, I have three little questions. The first one is, what is the average number of folks living per apartment? Do, are they, or actually, this is the second one. How many, what's the breakdown in the size? Are they one, two, three?
Oh, the unit mix did change. I can actually go look at that while we're talking and come back and give you the answer. I don't know the unit mix offhand. Do you, Brandon? Will, I can get that for you.
Well, thank you.
But there are one, two, and three bedrooms. No studios, correct?
Hey, Brandon. Can you bring it up?
This is Brandon Cho with the Development Manager with Oakmont.
Hello. You know, I'd have to total it up here, but the majority of the units are two-bedroom units. We have, gosh, I think roughly 50% of the units would be two-bedroom, about 35% are one-bedroom, and we have the rest at three-bedrooms.
Okay, thank you. And my, now, next question is, in general, for a 55 and older year apartments, about what is the average age of a person who rents in the building?
You did look at that.
I know that, so for our assisted living, which is the RCFE, our average age is around 85.
Okay.
And that's on the assisted side. I could not tell you on the 55 and over side. I can tell you that most of them are 55 and over.
Okay. Very clever. Okay, so then my next question is, because you have a lot of experience in this industry, what is the average stay that people have? Do they come in and live for a year, or do they live for, and this is, you can even stick your finger in the air, this is not a very scientific question.
Yeah, I mean, with the RCFE, it's around five to seven years.
Okay.
And that's, and most of our development is RCFE. The apartments, the senior apartments, I, I mean, sticking my finger up in the air, I'd say, you know, you have, okay, I'd just be guessing, you may have a little bit more information. I want to give you something a little better than a guess.
The last national survey we looked at had an average age of 72 years for senior apartments.
Yeah, but how long do they stay? Do they rent when they're?
That, we don't have data on that.
I don't have any idea. Is, well, let me ask a different question then. Is there a lot of turnover in the renters in apartments such as this?
I guess my comment about that would be that since Walnut Creek, senior properties have an, are mostly occupied, I doubt that there's, there would be a huge turnover. That's just me shooting from the hip here.
Okay, that's all I asked. Okay, thank you. I'm done.
I had a few questions. I'm not sure if, they're not for the applicant, but I think maybe Mr. Waymire might be involved, Mr. Mattis, or Mr. Buckshite.
I have one for the applicant.
Okay, then.
Sorry, I had one for the applicant.
One more question for you.
Tonight, you made a proposition that was numeric, but you had a letter that you sent over the weekend.
Yes.
That included three alternatives that you and Oakmont are proposing for the public benefit. Could you illustrate those? One was 2,500 linear feet of 10-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side of Mitchell.
Right.
What were the other two?
In order of preference, we would prefer to actually build, Oakmont would prefer to actually build the sidewalk on the north side of Mitchell so that the residents can benefit from it and the community. So that would be the preference. Aside from that, they would propose a fee of $564,000 cash fee, and then lastly, .5% of the building valuation only, no site work.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the 2,500 feet? That's all of Mitchell from Oak Grove to Wicket?
Right, so the part that's outside of the, I actually figured that at one point in time, it's like 1,900 feet outside, that would take it from the corner, or from the edge of the property to the corner of Oak Grove and from the edge of the property to Wicket. So the total's about 2,500 feet. The area outside the project frontage is more like 1,900.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry to interrupt, if I may. I'm, part of what, a bit of our concern, hesitancy, is with building the entire frontages, interactions with other properties, and right-of-way and access and that type of thing. So the flat rate might take care of some of that. I think it probably might be a little bit more expensive for us, but we're also worried about, about, you know, having to, you know, maybe have control over access for other properties that we don't own. So just a food for thought.
Mr. Waymire had suggested that. The city may have more, not leverage necessarily, but the city might be in a better position to negotiate with property owners. I believe, and Mr. Waymire can weigh in on this, but I believe that the right-of-way already exists, so you have 64 feet of right-of-way all the way down from Oak Grove to Wicket. The question, I think, becomes whether there's a tree or something that might straddle that you have to deal with the property owner on. And Mr. Waymire's position was that they're probably in a better position to deal with the property owners, in which case, we would agree to just pay the $564,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. So my question for, thank you, Ms. Carbo. My question for staff was, you know, there was a reference to Pioneer Village and the 1%. I'm not sure that we necessarily characterized it as a 1% there, but maybe if you can provide a little more background about how we assessed community benefits on the Pioneer Village project.
Good evening, Steve Waymire, city engineer. And it's really public benefits, it's not community benefits. Community benefits is really specifically for the specific plans that we did downtown, and we're trying to separate those two. So the downtown specific plans, both north downtown and the west downtown, have a community benefit portion of it, which is significantly more than what we're asking for on this stage today to get the actual bump in the zoning on those projects. So we're going to use the word public benefit here just to kind of keep things simple. But I actually have three projects that I can discuss that we looked at, the community benefits, and there is nothing in writing, there's no code, nothing that says what a community, a public benefit should be. And so in general, in my past experience, it's something that's been worked out either just organically with the developer, or there's actually been a true, you know, negotiation. I think the Maestrich Broadway Plaza project is a really good example. And that's the first project I want to talk about, is the Maestrich project. And on that one, the public benefit portion of that ended up being about 2% of the project cost. So just to kind of give you a point and reference on what that project is, and that included actually a lump sum fee of $3 million plus. And that included actually a lump sum fee of $3 million plus other work that was done for roadway work and different types of stuff. Ms. Silva was part of that negotiation, so she's very familiar with it.
Me too.
Oh, it's, well, that was a long time ago, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
So, so that's the first one that I was familiar with. The other one that we worked out before Pioneer Village was the Trellis project over by Tyce Valley. And on that one, we actually were able to have them totally rebuild the parking lot for Tyce Gym. If you think about how that used to be with the Jewish Community Center, and how it was kind of a mess over there as far as parking and everything else. And on that project, we also got them to build a lot of off-site safety improvements for the pedestrian crossings through there. And on that project, it was almost 10% of the benefits. And then over on Pioneer Village, on that project, in order to appease the neighbors, there was a lot of neighborhood upheaval in there for the density of the development that was going on there. And so the neighbors finished up pieces of sidewalk and built the bulb out to sort of cut down the cut-through traffic through there. And I don't know if you've been through there recently since it's been developed in the Pioneer roadway, but it really, it's a really significant improvement for the whole neighborhood, not just the project itself. So those are the three sort of community benefit projects that we've looked at. So is that what you're looking for?
It is, and is it fair to say that in all those instances, staff didn't really look at it with a quantified percentage in mind? You looked at, it was a negotiation either with the developer in terms of Mace Rich, or kind of what made sense in terms of the surrounding area or the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so the, a follow-up question on that. The staff report then, on page 12, talks about the proposed off-site improvement, public benefits, and lists sidewalk gap closures along the entire length of Mitchell Drive, improved pedestrian lighting and additional safety measures, and bus shelter upgrades. So I think we have a sense, more or less, of what the sidewalk gap closures are, and the applicants either willing to do that or provide us the money to do that. These other ones, do you have a sense for what the costs? How extensive are those? How beneficial would they be to the Shadlands pedestrian movement plan?
So I'd like to provide a correction, is that the, what the applicant's providing isn't gap closure, there's already sidewalk on that whole section of roadway there. What staff would propose is that we look on the south side of the roadway, where there is no sidewalk, and start to attempt to create a situation where we actually fill in what's not there now. And also, at the same time, try and put together a transformational project that will really, really change how people utilize Shadlands and slow the traffic down and provide an opportunity for people to use alternative transportation besides their car to get from the office facilities over to the shopping centers. Instead of having to get in your car, have a separate lane that you can hop in your scooter or your rental bike and get down to the shopping center if you're a Kaiser or whatever. So that's what we're looking at. And that's where the 1.3 million number that we're kind of looking at would actually get us both sides of the roadway to build that facility from Oak Grove down to where the parking ride lot is. For, and it's also kind of where the sports center is, and sort of that area is what we would look at trying to do with the 1.3 million dollars, and sort of have a transformational project through there.
So then it would, so it'd be a payment of a fee that would improve both sides of Mitchell, the sidewalk on both sides?
That's correct.
Yeah, with these lighting and safety measures at the street crossings and bus shelter upgrades?
Yeah, so the 1.3 may not get us completely there in what we would propose to do. And there is a lot that goes behind the scenes, and trust me, we've moved this meeting forward fairly quickly, so we haven't been able to study, and I can't give you exact details on everything yet. But I know there's a traffic impact fee portion of this project, and I would recommend, and it doesn't have to go to this part of the project, but maybe we take some of that money and we go ahead and use that to do some of the lighting and the other improvements that we may want to look at over there, too. To put together a real complete project in that area.
Okay.
The half million dollars isn't really complete the vision that we would look for there.
I understand. And all these improvements that are consistent with the Shadlands Mobility Plan or have been identified in that plan for that area?
That's correct. There's one change in what we look at, is if you looked at the details that people have been showing around, is they show a separated bike lane with delineators through there, which is kind of ugly, the white bollards that you see kind of placed up. So we would look at, part of this project would be to separate the bike lane so it's on a curb on its own. It would eliminate the delineators, it would make a nice clean look to the project.
Ms. Carbo, I will give you a chance to respond, but we're still asking questions of staff. There was a question that was raised in Ms. Carbo's letter about the calculation of construction cost, and is there a differential there? It was hard for me to kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point that she brought up, is that for the building costs, there's a specific table that you use, and you can see that table. It shows $200 a square foot to build a building, which is kind of crazy, but that's the number we're kind of stuck with. On the site work side, what we do is we work with a civil engineer, and we look at the numbers that they have and try and make sure they're realistic. So there's really, it is kind of a negotiation back and forth of what that number is. It's not a set number that they can just hang their hat on. So that is a number that we do kind of go back and forth with them. They usually try and, that's how our fees are set, is off of that. So developers obviously would come in and try and lowball that cost so their fees are lower. And so that's, that is a problem that we go back and forth with kind of a couple times during the project.
So you would, you're saying here are the improvements that cost about 1.3, and that's about 1% of the construction cost, but we're not trying to get hung up on 1% of the construction cost?
Not necessarily.
Yeah. Any other questions of Mr. Waymire? Okay, Mayor Protem Sola.
So what I'm struggling with is a multimodal plan for the entire business park versus what are the best improvements that would support this development that would be outside of the scope of their frontage? And so when you describe missing, and I went out and drove along here on Sunday, there's missing sidewalk, completely missing, in front of the Walnut Creek Executive Park. And then is there, in fact, how would these residents get to the orchards? Because if it's crossed the street and hit no sidewalk, and then wander through a parking lot for an office, that feels problematic to me. What would be the scope of the work if it's not, you know, going all the way from Oak Grove to Mitchell, to Wicket may not be, makes sense, but how do we make the other side of the street better and adapt, adapt for this new use that's across the street?
That's exactly what we're looking at, and that's how we sort of came up with this concept, this project and the fees that we're looking at, is, and it does get complicated because across the street, it's, there's trees, there's a hillside, there's property issues. And what we would do is actually build the improvements into the roadway, shift the, shift the center line a little bit, narrow the roadway down to 20 feet so it's a real short crossing for people to get across there. Right now, it's a very wide roadway, if you've ever walked there and people don't park, so if people speed through that area. Our goal would be to really slow the, slow down the traffic, make it a place so the people that are using this new facility have a very comfortable place that they can cross the street, work their way towards the shopping center. And also, people using the rest of the business park have a comfortable way to get back and forth there. There's also the schoolchildren, there's a couple schools that are in that area. So it's, it's just the beginning point of what this could be like. So that's the, you've hit it exactly on head that there's no sidewalk across the other side. How do we make that so it's comfortable for people to move across back and forth through there?
So are the sidewalk improvements, are you on both sides of the street, or are you just on the south side, which is completely deficient?
So that's where the 1.3 million would be both sides of the street.
Does it include a cross, crossing that would be appropriate?
Yes.
And does this include that it would arrive at a spot where people wouldn't be walking over a hill and landscaping, but would be walking an appropriate location through the executive, it's Walnut Creek Executive Park?
Yeah, so that's the trick. I mean, I, I live and walk in that area a lot, and the trick is, I, I work my way through, and just like you've noticed, too. The block that the Executive Park makes is a big block, and it's not split up. That's what's nice when we did the sports complex, we split that block up and put a pathway through the middle, so that was a public benefit project. So that, right now, there is no official public way to walk through that office park. There's a couple comfortable pathways. It would be nice to be able to work with those, and maybe we can work with, you know, some of the people from the P-Bid on creating a pathway that we can get through there. But right now, there's no simple way to cut through there directly over to the, to the orchards. You would have to walk over to Oak Grove and come back up that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Waymire? Steve, you mentioned the traffic fee, and I think, if I recall, you said you, we don't have the amount of the traffic fee the applicant would pay.
It's somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. I don't have the exact number, it's in that range.
Okay. Good. And then I, Ms. Carbo, I saw you rise, and if you'd like to respond to anything that was stated, now's your time.
I just want to mention, our land use council is here from Perkins Coie, and he mentioned, I just think it's important that you know that what Steve mentioned about the public benefit for Broadway Plaza, they have a 10-year, is it a 10-year development agreement? So they have a long-term development agreement that, that locks it, and they can develop it over time. So it's something to consider.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council, I think there are a lot of resolutions. I think we should start the discussion, perhaps, with the public benefit issue. And staff has one proposal, the applicant has two or three others, and maybe we can just go down the line, and each of us can opine on our thoughts. I think Councilmember Darling has some thoughts. I'll start with her.
Councilmember Darling is on a really different time zone and doesn't have a lot of thoughts.
We're getting to you early, then.
That's good, because I might be asleep by the time this is over.
It'll be a race.
I understand the, the back and forth here on what the public benefit. I think everybody agrees there should be something there, and then what is commensurate with the project in, in this location? I found that the discussion of public benefits is very much about individual project in its location, solving some of the problems. I like the sidewalk extension. I like the idea of providing some upgrades to pedestrian crossings across that wide gap. I think if I was thinking of a number, it's somewhere between, it looks like we're talking about a number between 5.00, or 560,000 and 1.3. I think there's a number within there that, but I'd be interested in hearing my fellow colleagues how far we want to go towards that higher number. Which is a big pile of mush, I know, I'm not.
Okay.
You want to do the other sleepy side?
Yes, Councilmember Haskew.
I, I think that, I think that we need to be wary of the fact, if we go for the whole enchilada, the state is already looking at setting up limits to how much we can charge, especially in terms of residential real estate. I, I really don't think that this is one of those places where I want to push the applicant as hard as we would if it were a full commercial zone, meaning that what happened at Broadway Plaza isn't, in my mind, even close to analogous to what we're asking for this. And I think we get some actual benefit because we get some residences in an area we might not have looked at before, which, no. We can, we have these RENA numbers, we can roll our eyes and say we can't be developers, but I think we really have to think about when a developer says, steps forward and says, "We're going to build residential property, and you're going to take care of low-income situations" and all that sort of stuff. I, under today's circumstances, I'm reluctant to push the envelope. And, and so I, and I like things clean and simple, and, and so I'm thinking, I, I could push for $650,000 and feel really good because I've raised the price, but I really don't want to push as hard as I hear somebody, a lot of the people doing it. So that's my.
Mayor Protem Sola.
First of all, thank you to the applicant, the public that spoke, and staff for all of the work on this. I know it feels like it took a long time, but let's remember that when we talked about it in 2019, it was only a few months before COVID, and it's been very, very difficult to get anything done during these times. My inclination is to focus on what do we need to do to ensure the residents have good access to the rest of the, of the park, whether it's going to Kaiser or whether it's going to the orchards. And I am concerned about that gap that is immediately across the street. I am not concerned so much about a five-foot sidewalk that might be in front of the project, but it will be a 10-foot-wide sidewalk. I'm not concerned about making it 10 feet wide all the way from one corner to the other. I'm concerned about the movement, the likely movement of residences in this complex. And I am in that same range where what is a reasonable amount, given that this is a rental housing project, it is not a for-sale project that will continue to generate. If it were a for-sale condominium, every sale of a condominium increases our property tax values. This will have, will be sitting on a very, a point in time. The, and so $650,000 to $750,000 with dedicated toward the improvements that are going to ensure greater mobility on foot for the residents.
Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you. And again, thank you to staff and Jessica's presentation, obviously very thorough. I know we're going to be talking more about the, the project itself. I kind of, I almost feel like we're not prepared to talk about the backend as much right now, but the applicant's asking for a general plan amendment, that's a major ask, as far as I'm concerned. It's like rezoning. And especially, excuse me, especially in an area, excuse me, especially in an area that's designated as a business park, turning it into residential. And because of that, and especially hearing that, that it was 2% for the public benefits at, at Broadway Plaza, I'm, excuse me, I'm not inclined to change what the staff recommendation on this is. That said, I could look at, seeing it reduced a bit to, let's say, a million dollars, where there still will be some significant public benefit there. But again, I look at rezoning and general plan amendments very seriously, and I'll have more to say on that when we talk in a bit regarding the project itself. And so because of that, I'm not inclined to reduce it by as much as half or even, yeah, well, by as much as half.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out what the right answer to this one is. I, I certainly think a public benefit is appropriate. We made it clear, you know, 31 months ago, when the request was, should we move forward? Or at least some of us did. I know it's not reflected in the minutes, but I recall saying it, and Mayor Protem Sola as well, that with the general plan amendment and changing from, from office and R and D to residential, that there needed to be a public benefit. I think there are also some, some concessions that the city is granting here, both in terms of the FAR, I never quite pinned down what the FAR of joint genome is, but I, I think it's essentially a doubling, if not more, of the FAR. There's a height calculation that's being done based on the highest point of the property, and I know we have precedent for doing that. So there, there, those factors, to me, necessitate the public benefit. And what I, a little uncomfortable with is, is throwing out the numbers as opposed to what the, what the right improvement should be for the project, irrespective of kind of how much those costs, subject to a rule of reason. I, I do think it makes sense to focus on improvements that residents of this, would help residents of this project and residents of the larger business park walk and, and get to amenities and facilities in an easier fashion. And certainly, you know, narrowing that road and adding additional crossings, I think, does that. So I'm, I'm more comfortable with the staff recommendation, perhaps with an acknowledgement or a realization that some of the traffic impact fees that would be paid for by this project could be used for some of these purposes as well. So I'll throw that, throw that out there. And now we can talk about the. And now we can talk about the general plan amendment and the actual, the changes to the zoning and land use that are before us.
Do we have a conclusion?
It's not the conclusion quite yet. So I'll turn to Councilmember Darling on the land use changes that are being sought.
Okay, even though I wasn't on the council when 2015, when you guys originally looked at this, I am supportive of the concept of moving to the senior housing here. I think when we did our mild tweaks on Shadland zoning back in 2016, there was a recognition that this is a business park that is ready for a major shakeup. And you see that in all the development that's gone on with the orchards, with the sports complex. We probably are outsourcing or redoing of our specific plan by letting people go forward with individual projects like this. But I think this is a good use to go in there. I'm supportive of the general plan amendment to allow this project to go forward.
That makes sense. Okay, Councilmember Haskew.
Ditto.
Mayor Protem Silva.
As I was in November, I think it was November of 2019, I'm supportive of the proposed general plan amendment. It's been a long time coming. This is almost a 50-year-old business park, and it has not, it has sputtered for a long time, in part because its location was so far from the freeway and so far from transit. It was planned in an environment in which there was anticipation of greater traffic and transportation through their major thoroughfares, and that did not come to fruition. So we have been basically putting a Band-Aid on this for years, and this is another Band-Aid, but it's an appropriate use. It is not extreme. Having seniors live in the business park, Beaumontia has already, has done that. This is not precedent-setting, and we already did that. And it is a complementary use. If the healthcare sector is the most important and viable sector in the business park because of the location of Kaiser and the proximity to John Year Health, then having seniors that would draw more of the healthcare sector here makes imminent sense, and it's a lower impact on whether it's schools or traffic through a community like this. And we have to be cognizant that when seniors are moving into properties like this, they are perhaps providing an empty home for another larger family of a family age. And so I am supportive and will be looking forward to the motion on that one, because maybe we can make a motion here soon.
Councilmember Wilk.
So taken on its own, I think the project looks very nice and would no doubt be a wonderful project for people to live in. And I like the design, and I like the time that was put into that. But I do have some concerns, and so I'll probably end up being the minority of the concerns from what I'm hearing from my colleagues on the dais on this. So while the housing units do support RENA numbers, which is good, the project is large and would reduce the Shadlands Business Park a significant amount, it seems like it's about 5%. And the city has previously approved some of these new uses in the business park at Shadlands on a trade-off for housing. So my concern now is that we're looking to further reduce the business park, aspect of Shadlands Business Park, and setting a precedent and furthering that precedent. So we're either going to continue to support a business park, like if this area were not designated business park, and we were looking for some general, just different amendments or specific plan changes or something, I wouldn't have as much of a concern. But if we're going to continue to support a business park as a city, or are we going to continue the fragmentation of this away from jobs? And really, that's the biggest part of this, because, yes, we need housing with the rest of California. We certainly know that, we hear that up and down the state. And we've heard it from the Chamber of Commerce in several instances, including a recent meeting with Walnut Creek, that we need to bring in more biotech and life sciences businesses and to ensure that we have the space for that for jobs. And yet, here we are, possibly demolishing the former Joint Genome Institute on the campus that was designated and designed specifically for biotech and life sciences and the high-speed internet and infrastructure that's needed. And removing now a large space for future jobs in that industry, and really, future jobs in general. We know that we need more high-end jobs for our residents that live here. At the same time, we're removing over 100 trees, six of them, as we've seen, are highly-protected oak trees. And we've actually forced projects to change their plans to protect these trees in prior years. I do appreciate the explanation of the JGI building and the upgrades that are needed from the applicant, and so I thank Deb Carbo for providing that information. But I do want to talk a little bit about jobs, because this is one of our council priorities that we voted on in the last year when it comes to economic development and COVID recovery. As it stated, this includes efforts related to improving economic diversification, job retention and creation, and the jobs-housing ratio. By approving this, we're reducing job potential while we are increasing housing. And this is the opposite of our stated vote on that priority. And while the project itself does absolutely fit a need in general, I'm at a loss as to why we would compromise our business park and future businesses and jobs and our committed priority to improve the jobs and housing imbalance for a residential project of any kind in this location. And I am cognizant of the number of staffing jobs that this would bring in. I get that. Regarding traffic, this will add cars to Ignacio Valley Road and Treat. We know that, it depends upon how many cars, and we've seen the report on that. People 55 and over are still driving, I think a lot of us in this room can attest to that. And it's not, as we just heard, it's not going to be only people that are 55 and over living there, but there will be people that are younger as well, and they could be driving for another 25, 30 years. And it's good to see public transit that is possible in that area, but we still know the primary mode of transportation living in that area of the city is driving to downtown, whether it's Ignacio or Treat. So we're adding more cars to that area. And we, as a council, have talked in the past about getting behind the effort of residences being built downtown, where there's access to public transit, they can walk to Bart, they can walk downtown. And so this project location negates that as well. These are just areas that we voted on in the past. So it's asking for this general plan amendment, to me, in this area for a business park, I have a concern with that. And it sounds like I'm going to be the minority on this, and that's fine. But I do want to at least ensure that what we have said in the past, and not the distant past, the very recent past of the last year or two, that this is contradictory to those discussions that we have had.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk, and thank you, colleagues. It was 2019 when we had the kind of the gatekeeper hearing on this, and Councilmember Darling, you weren't on the council at that time, but I do recall that we had, we were trying to put up some guardrails around some of the concerns that Councilmember Wilk outlined, and one of those was that no more than 10% of the park could be rededicated to a residential use, and it had to, the sites had to be located within a certain parameter, certain distance from Oak Grove and Ignacio. So I think you have a very legitimate concern that it's either a park, and we're going to treat it as a park, or it's not, and we're going to give up, abandon the hope on park. I'm not ready to abandon hope on the business park. I think we've seen a lot of positive developments happen there in pretty recent past, and I think with the limits and the parameters we're putting on this development, I'm comfortable with the general plan amendment and zoning changes. I do think it's a complementary use with the other healthcare uses that are out there, and I thought it was a good point that was raised, that the rental product doesn't exist out there. There's an expensive ownership option, but not rental, so I think it's filling that need as well. And I also am sensitive to the fact that the Joint Genome facility really can't be reused at this point, so you're talking about scraping and rebuilding it, and the costs of that are prohibitive for the rents that you would get out there. So it wouldn't be feasibly redeveloped or reused as an office and an R&amp;D use. And so we have to look at what's the next best use for that site. And I do think senior housing makes sense at that location with the other uses that are there. I think it helps in terms of vehicle miles traveled. I do think that seniors drive less than others out in North Gate and in that area, and so won't really be making a huge increase to traffic on Ignacio. I do want to say, though, I think that this is, on the public benefits, I appreciate what staff has done and the improvements that they've outlined. I think we should ask for that of this project. This project is asking for a lot of changes to the plan, to the specific plan, to the zoning, and I think it's, you know, we also have to be mindful of the precedent we may or may not be establishing with this project and other future projects, and whatever, you know, negotiations or deals that are granted for this project that aren't granted for another one. I thought it was a fair point that Broadway Plaza had a 10-year vesting development agreement, that's different, and that's why they paid more, but Trellis wasn't, and neither was Pioneer Village. And I think that if we're looking at something that'll improve Mitchell and this area, then I'm most comfortable going with the staff recommendation for the pedestrian improvements that are outlined in the staff report.
So I thought we were just talking about the general plan amendment, but you...
Well, I think it's time to tie the two together, because we talked about the public benefit, and so now we're talking about the planning. If anyone has further thoughts or deliberations on the two, now is the time.
I'll just say, I'm struggling because the proposed on the public benefit is in the PD ordinance, and so I would...
Should we move down then and talk about...
So I would prefer that we do the general plan amendment.
We have to do the NIG-DECK first.
And work our way down, and the order staff has presented it, because I feel like we're starting to...
So I'll entertain a motion on the mitigated NIG-DECK and mitigation monitoring program.
Okay, I will move to approve the resolution, City Council, adopting the mitigated NIG-DECK addendum and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for Oakmont of Shadlands, application Y20-034.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
No.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, next up, the adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment and specific plan amendment.
Mayor, if I may, I would recommend that the council have a discussion about the PD ordinance as the Mayor Protem identified. The approvals, as they're presented to the council beyond the CEQA addendum, are really linked together, so if the council is going to approve the general plan amendment and the specific plan amendments, you are effectively conferring the benefit on them by those two without the PD ordinance. So I would suggest you deal with the PD ordinance, at least at a concept level, so that we could maybe draft some edits to the language, and then the council come back and take action on the general plan, specific plan, and PD ordinance.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So you were right.
You don't say that very often. Okay, so we're going to talk about the PD ordinance next, and we have one for 1925 Oak Grove, which is essentially retaining self-storage, so do we want to handle that one and then get to 2800?
Yeah, that one, you can do that. That one is just retaining the existing zoning for the self-storage site, so it has the same requirements, although it does have that language that allows for the slightly larger FAR, because it's an existing use at .7 right now, which exceeds the .5.
So it's recognizing that legacy condition?
Correct.
So do I have a motion to introduce and waive the further reading of the PD ordinance for 1925 Oak Grove Road?
I won't repeat it, I will take credit for it.
And I will second that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Haskew?
Yes.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I think I've kicked the can as far as I possibly can. We could do the tree removal permit, but let's talk about the PD ordinance for 2800 Mitchell Drive.
And Mayor, I would just note that the only portion of the PD ordinance that is relevant to the discussion you're having right now is Section 11, which represents the wording for the staff recommended condition. If the council were to switch to a fixed dollar payment, then there's some minor modifications that we could propose to you to accomplish that at whatever amount you would like to do, if you want to consider some other alternative we may have to draft to accomplish that, too, if it's not just the staff recommendation. So this is on page four of the PD ordinance, Section 11.
So there were a lot of issues that were raised. One is, should it be construction costs only, or a construction cost plus site development? And we didn't hear anything relevant in the comparatives, they weren't necessarily using... I didn't quite understand if the site development costs were in the comparatives. We've had, there were five of us, and we were in a range. I think three of us might have been below a million. One of you may have been at a million, one was at full, the 1.3. I would prefer to do this where we specify what we expect to have happen, which is what happened with Trellis and what happened with Pioneer Village. And it is actually what happened with Broadway Plaza. Broadway Plaza's development agreement was pre, you know, reverse engineered to the 2%, but it was $3 million development agreement, plus there were site improvements to the corner of Newell and Broadway. There's some legacy work that may relate to the Newell Avenue Bridge over San Ramon Creek, and then there was also something with the underground tunnels, flood control channel tunnels. So, yeah, I would, and that's where, can we start by deciding whether we're just looking for a fixed percentage or to come to agreement on what the improvements should be?
I think that's a good point, and I'm not fixated on the fixed percentage. I would be inclined to move the staff recommendation as outlined on page 12. It's, seems specific enough, staff knows what it refers to, in terms of the sidewalk gap closures along the entire length of Mitchell, improved pedestrian lighting, and additional safety measures at street crossings, and bus shelter upgrades. And I would just say, on the last one, we heard some testimony about how, you know, it's well-served by county connections, so it should have commensurate bus facilities.
So I'm going to say that I think that's a swing at the back fence in hopes of a home run. Mitchell to Oak Grove is 2,500 linear feet, and I'm not sure what the gap is, and I would be more focused on the gap that is the south side of Mitchell, as opposed to corner to corner, which is, you know, I understand the desire to get the whole thing done or a good chunk of it, but I also am mindful of costs in this environment and what the project might deliver.
Well, I think the difference in what we're seeing is the applicant is talking about replacing the sidewalk on the north side. Staff is more interested in working on the gap on the south side along that other section of the project. I do note the PD, the way the PD is written right now, it says, "Do these kind of things up to this level." And I think that's a useful construct, because I don't want to start saying, "Do these things"
Yeah.
without a cap on it. So I think if we say, okay, what are the things that we want to do, and then what cap do we put in there?
Not to exceed.
That will give our staff good direction.
If I may add to that briefly, Mayor, our city engineer may want to speak to this as well, but if there is some flexibility in the PD ordinance in terms of either a hard cap on a dollar amount or the work to be performed, that gives some flexibility to what work the developer might do compared to what the city might do, recognizing there could be some right-of-way challenges. So it might be that, you know, hypothetically, the developer does X dollar amount of the repair and then pays the remainder for the remaining of the work that the city might do. And I don't know if our city engineer wants to speak to that, but I believe we discussed some of that previously internally.
Yeah, I think I'd be most comfortable with, and trust me, we don't have the details all the way hammered out yet, so that's the issue, is that there's some of this work that would be very, not... that would be very, not simple, but would make sense for the developer to do while they're doing their project, and there's other stuff that makes more sense for the city to be doing. And so I prefer that we work that out, excuse me, it's been a while since I've been up here. We work that out later. If you can come up with, here is a general number or dollar we're working towards, we can work with the applicant about what projects they could work on, and then we can work out what we want to work on. Our ultimate goal would be to close the gap on the north side, and then work on that, so that works well with the project that they're building also.
Wait a minute.
On the south side.
You saw my face, even behind the mask.
South side. That's one of the biggest issues staff has on this, and then to make it so that we can really slow the traffic down in that area, and make it a good project for the development and everything else around there. So I prefer a number that we can work with the applicant. They build some, we build some, we kind of work that out later. Is that what you're getting at?
What's a good number?
I told you, this is a tough, I know this is a tough decision, so I kind of gave you, you know, the 1.3, we're building a really nice project. I understand all the issues that we're trying to work through here, so I'm very understanding of that, and so that's just staff's point, and then so I can't tell you what to do here.
Okay. Councilmember Haskew, you've been quiet over there.
Yeah, because I don't feel like I'm an expert in any of this. I am still struggling with the total cost of the project, and the fact that we want to encourage developers to work with us, and there are just, the economic factors right now are not equivalent to the economic factors that were before, when the developers were developing. And I just want really good developers working with Walnut Creek, and if we're looking at precedences, it's not to extract as much money as we can out of the developers to get to what we want to do. I think we have some obligation to fill in some of the gaps along the way as well. So, I mean, I was serious about my $650,000. I thought it was more than their number, and because I figured they undercharged us for what they were really going to be willing to pay, but I wasn't, I'm not comfortable setting a million dollars as an additional fee, and it just falls into too many, too many, what is the word? It makes us look weak when we're defending that we encourage development in Walnut Creek. It is a bigger issue than just this project. And I'm not afraid of setting a precedent, because the, there isn't, I don't believe Broadway Plaza is in any way analogous to this situation, and we have to take into consideration the circumstances at the moment of time when we're dealing with the project, and the economics will change.
I'm not so concerned about the past projects, but a potential future project that's looking at making a general plan amendment.
Right, well, I don't know. Just one time doesn't make a precedent, it makes it a possibility, but the economic situation will change. We are dealing with a foreign economic situation. All of the things we're doing, rural food shortages, and gas prices, and everything else, I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable throwing the problem on the developer.
And I'll go back to kind of, my position really hasn't changed that much, that I think it's, we're still asking for, or the applicant is asking for pretty significant changes to our general plan and rezoning. They make sense to make them. I've gotten past that. They make sense to make them. They have appropriate limits on them. There has to be a public benefit provided, corresponding to the magnitude of those changes, and I think the ones that staff has outlined here, the sidewalk gap closures on the south side, the improved pedestrian lighting and safety measures at street crossings, and the bus shelter upgrades, all make sense. If we were to quantify it and put a do-not-exceed amount of $1 million, I think that that's reasonable, but, so, and it may come in cheaper than that. I don't know, because we don't have a good number for what these are going to cost, and some of these we may do on our own, but if we are going to make a serious effort to improve, to get people out of their cars, and improve pedestrian mobility, especially for the seniors who are going to be living there, then, I mean, it's time to put our money where our mouth is, and say that these have to be done as part of this project, and they're commensurate with the level of changes that are being sought by the applicant for this project. We've had a lot of projects that have gone through without this. When we did the community benefits program, we codified that, that community benefits are needed for projects within the downtown and the north downtown specific plan areas, and I don't think this is of the magnitude that would be required for a project there, but it's still, it needs to be a substantial public benefit that's provided to grant these changes for me.
And, you know, looking at this, I could support something that said, do the tasks that staff was looking for with a cost not to exceed a million dollars. That sounds like that could work for me. It gets us a new and innovative use out there, which is appropriate, but also helps to transform Shadelands into a more modern facility with better access, get people out of their cars, get the seniors safely walking over to Orchards.
So you're prepared to make a motion?
I'd have no idea how to say that.
So I would recommend to the council that if you do make a motion right now, it'd be on the business deal point, and then I can propose words in the ordinance that effectuate that.
So I will make a motion to approve the PD zoning with the change in...
It's due for the deal point, not the whole PD.
I know. I was trying to put it all, like, so, approve the PD zoning with the deal point, that in the Section 11, rather than the percent of building cost, we go with a hard number not to exceed 1 million.
And list the improvements that are on page 12 of the staff report, the sidewalk gap closures, the improve...
Yes.
Second.
If I can ask a question, is this approving the overall project, or just this portion of it?
So, to be clear, because we have to have the wording of the ordinance in final form, this is really just a motion to determine whether there's a majority of the council for the business point that Councilmember Darling has just proposed, which is a million-dollar cap, and the funds to be spent towards the improvements that are identified on page 12 of the report, which is the sidewalk gap closure. So it's only on the business point. If the council gets consensus on the business point, then I can give you wording for the ordinance, then you would act on the ordinance itself.
And I'm assuming that there's nothing else in the PD ordinance that people are going to want to change, but for right now, my motion is on that deal point of the million-dollar cap. Does that make sense?
Yep. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So, Mayor, the item before the council, then, now you can, if the council wished you, you could return back to the general plan resolution, which covers both the general plan and the specific plan, and then we could come back to the ordinance, and I can read some language into the ordinance. Is the applicant prepared to indicate on the record concurrence to the proposed change, or not? You're not obligated to do so, but it would clear up the record. All right, so the council would understand that this would be the changes that would go through. This would be a condition of the development of the PD zone as it's been adopted. So for them to go forward to get a certificate of occupancy, their first certificate of occupancy, the payment would have to be made.
Okay, so turning to the general plan amendment and the specific plan amendment, do we have a motion to approve, adopt a resolution approving those two changes?
I move to adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Walnut Creek, approving the amendments to general plan 2025 and the specific plan, Shadelands Business Park specific plan, for the Oakmont of Shadelands.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
No, it's obviously going to pass, so my votes no, but knowing that it's going to pass, I look forward to seeing the completion of it and the progress, and seniors do need housing, so I'm glad about that. I'm just, but I'm voting no on this.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
So, Mayor, with regards to the zoning ordinance that is before the council, the motion would be a motion to waive reading and introduce the ordinance that's before you today. I would recommend that the council, I'm going to read the change into the record. It would read, sorry, I need to bring one thing up on my computer here. So the, the Section 11 would be amended to read in its entirety, "The applicant or any successor property owner shall pay an amount equal to $1 million to the city," period. And then the rest of the, so I'm reading it as it's rewritten, not in terms of edits, because there's a lot in the current paragraph that was addressed to this kind of 1% percentage issue, which is not necessary anymore. The second sentence of what would be the revised Section 11 would read, "The payment shall be made prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the project at 2800 Mitchell Drive, and the funds would be used for the mobility improvements, including the sidewalk gap closures along the entire length of Mitchell Drive, the improved pedestrian lighting, and additional safety measures at street crossings, and the bus shelter upgrades, as determined by the city."
I wanted a clarifying question on the first point about the applicant will pay a million. That wasn't necessarily consistent with how I thought that would read, which was...
Up to...
Yeah, that, my understanding was the applicant would fund the construction of these improvements, and we'd specify what they are, and an amount not to exceed $1 million.
The, and Councilmember Darling, that's consistent with your understanding of the motion as well, too.
Yeah, I was assuming that we would, there would be some negotiation, and the applicant would construct a portion of the improvements.
So I would recommend to the council that you establish a minimum, and then the not-to-exceed amount, so that you're not in a completely subsequent discussion about what the minimal price is, because as Mr. Waymire spoke to the council, there would be a discussion with the applicant about what they might be able to build as part of their project, and what the credit might be for that, versus what the city might build and use the funds for.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, you know, what I was understanding from the discussion, to repeat back, is that the dollar value that was being targeted was $1 million. The mix of how much of that is paid in cash, or how much is done through work, is what would be subject to future discussion, so...
Not what I was voting on.
Yeah, I think what my motion would, if I were translating it into language, the first sentence under 11 is, "The applicant or any successor property owner shall construct improvements, make an equivalent payment to the city, or a combination of both, with a value equal to $1 million."
Or not to exceed...
Not to exceed $1 million.
You could, so that... That would work as well. I'm sorry if I misunderstood exactly what you were trying to do.
That's okay.
That would work. The council would just understand, and I think Mr. Waymire spoke to, that there would be conversations between the developer and the staff about how that would play out.
Yeah, my assumption is that construct improvements and make payments are both options. There's a combination between the two of them.
That's correct.
With a not-to-exceed.
That's right.
And then the subsequent specification of what projects?
Yeah.
Which was the second sentence I read into the record. So if the council wished to entertain, to waive reading and introduce the ordinance with the first sentence as restated by Councilmember Darling, and the second sentence as identified by me, that would replace the existing Section 11.
Did you move that, Ms. Councilmember Darling?
That's exactly what I moved.
Well, I hit the button to say something else, but I will second the motion while I operate under an efficient thing. Did I hear somebody say we should establish a minimum number?
It's not necessary, given that there is the "shall construct improvements," or "make an equivalent payment to the city," so there is already the expectation that there will be improvements made with an amount that does not exceed $1 million.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We've got one more left.
Tree removal.
Tree removal. And there's some edits to that resolution that were on the dais? So would anyone like to move the adoption of the resolution approving the tree removal permit, and the tree drip line encroachment permit with the amendments on the dais?
I move the adoption of the resolution of the City Council, the City of Walnut Creek, that will approve the proposed tree removal and tree drip line encroachment for application number Y 20 dash 34, Oakmont of Shadelands.
Second.
And I would like to say that we are very cognizant of the removal of trees, but it's a weighing, it's a balancing of the benefits that will be delivered by the project and the location of those trees that are necessary to make the benefit of the project actually viable, and so that's the challenge when you have parking lot trees that are going to be basically above a parking garage.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Mayor, may I ask a question of the city clerk? Suzy, I don't believe that, because of my interruption into the council's discussion, that they took action on attachment four yet. Do you have that in the record, that, that's the PD ordinance for the self-storage unit? The mayor raised that issue, but I don't think the council ever took action on that.
I thought that was our second motion.
I thought it was, too.
Was that, you have that in the record with an action on that one?
But I got ahead of myself, and I didn't, I need to amend that motion, or if everybody understands that my last motion did include the corrections that were presented on the dais.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, with that, we are finished with this item. Congratulations, and look forward to a successful initiation of the project. We've been going for almost three hours, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll return at 9:00 PM. so we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll return at 9:00 PM.
All right, welcome back. Next on the agenda is a consideration item entitled "Informational Update in Consideration of an Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Walnut Creek, Amending Chapter Six of Title Three of the Walnut Creek Municipal Code to Require the Safe Storage of Firearms in a Residence." And at this time, I would invite Assistant City Attorney Alexandra Wolf—there she is—to provide the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Francois, Mayor Protam Silva, and council members. My name is Ally Wolf, Assistant City Attorney. City Council previously directed staff to present an option to council regarding adoption of a safe firearm storage ordinance, and I'm here tonight presenting council with a draft safe firearm storage ordinance for your consideration. Yes, it's working, thank you. Research has shown that having a loaded and unlocked gun in the home increases risk of gun-related injury and death. Children are particularly at risk for firearm injury and death when the firearms are not safely stored in their homes or in homes that they visit. However, applying trigger locks or securing firearms in lock boxes when storing firearms in the home reduces this risk. Existing state laws do establish restrictions related to firearm storage. And as you can see, I've listed two penal code sections on the PowerPoint slide. The first penal code section relates to negligent or criminal storage of a firearm. Under this penal code section, it is a crime to negligently store or leave a firearm in any location within a premises under the person's custody or control when they know or should know that a child is likely to gain access without parent or guardian permission, unless reasonable action is taken to secure that firearm. The penalties increase for this crime if a child or person prohibited from possessing a firearm or deadly weapon do obtain access and cause injury or death to themselves or another, or carries a firearm into a public place. The next penal code section, 23635, relates to firearm sale with a safety device. Except for certain exemptions, any firearm sold or transferred in California by a licensed firearm dealer and any firearm manufactured in California must be accompanied by a firearm safety device. And these safety devices that are approved are listed on the Department of Justice's roster of approved firearm safety devices. Currently, there is no state law that requires safety devices such as lock boxes or trigger locks be used on all firearms stored in a residence. Applying trigger locks or using lock boxes when storing firearms in the home reduces the risk of unauthorized users, including children, from accessing and using firearms, which can reduce unintentional discharges, firearm theft, gun-related homicides, and suicides. And you'll see the language that I've included up here on the slide is the proposed language that we are presenting today in the draft safe firearm storage ordinance, which would establish that no person shall keep a firearm in any residence in Walnut Creek owned or controlled by that person unless the firearm is stored in a locked container or the firearm is disabled with a safety device listed on the California Department of Justice's roster of firearm safety devices. The draft ordinance does provide exceptions to this restriction, including when the firearm is in the immediate control or possession of an individual in accordance with applicable laws, in the immediate control or possession of a peace officer, or when in compliance with reporting the loss or theft of a firearm under state law. Initially, staff provided a draft ordinance specifically imposing criminal penalties for a violation of the safe firearm storage ordinance. This would include both either an infraction or misdemeanor penalties. And as you can see, an infraction establishes a set fines. A misdemeanor penalty would include imprisonment in county jail not to exceed six months or by a fine not exceeding $1,000 or both. Staff have also provided an alternate draft ordinance, which has been attached to the council agenda for this evening. And that alternate draft ordinance amends the penalties and actually only includes civil penalties. So in this alternate draft ordinance, the civil penalties would be set with a warning for the first violation, $100, and increasing amounts for each subsequent violation. Tonight, staff asked council to consider an ordinance amending Chapter Six of Title Three of the municipal code to require the safe fire—the storage of firearms in a residence, and provide direction to staff on whether to come back at the next council meeting to introduce the ordinance. If the council so desires, council may waive reading this evening and introduce the ordinance following public comments and council discussion. I'm available to answer any questions, and Lieutenant Holly Connors is also here available representing the police department. Of course, Chief Knox, if you have any questions for the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Any questions for Assistant City Attorney? Councilmember Darling?
So, looking at this ordinance here locally, it would, in fact, provide greater direction to store guns safely than the existing state law. Is that correct?
That's correct. So currently, state law does not require the use of any kind of locking device or trigger locks. It does provide penalties in certain circumstances if precautions are not taken, but it does not specifically require that use. Furthermore, the initial state law that I referenced related to negligent or criminal storage of a firearm is specifically only related to access by a child or an individual who is not authorized to possess a firearm by law. And so this fills the gap that, in this circumstance, every individual who stores a firearm in a home would be required to use a trigger lock or safety device unless an exception applies.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Protam Silva?
Thank you very much. So how do we communicate this to the public in order to encourage compliance? And I guess that is also a question that says, to what extent do we—what percentage of the population has them in the home, do we think? And is there a way to—are they licensed when they're sold? When people buy them, are these rules then, oh, you live in Walnut Creek, therefore you need to know about this rule? I mean, how will people know? Help.
So the council could provide direction to staff to do further outreach in terms of public information and public notice of the ordinance if it's adopted.
Oh, actually, I wasn't even talking about the ordinance. I was talking about more just ongoing—if we were to adopt to this, how do we get the word out consistently and regularly so that people know to comply?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm understanding the question correctly. You mean to comply with the existing state law or with this law if it were adopted?
This law.
Oh, so this law, then, again, we could do—we could do public outreach to the Walnut Creek resident community. We could also do informational outreach to the—to gun dealers that sell weapons in, you know, in the Contra Costa County area—
Okay.
—so that they're aware of it. If the council wanted us to do that kind of outreach, that's something that staff could do in addition to the ordinance. And the council could also, you know, direct that—as you have in some other instances, you could direct us to do outreach for a period of time before it actually has an enforcement mechanism to them.
So then, my second question really does have to do with enforcement. I understand the penalties, but in your research with other communities that have these laws now on the books, how are they—how are they enforcing it? Who's reporting it? Let me give you a scenario. At Los Lomas a few years back, there was a student who was found to have a gun in his—in a backpack. It did not turn into a tragic situation, but it was a shocking situation. What enforcement would this new ordinance trigger regarding an incident like that?
And the incidence was the individual had the firearm—
At school.
—at school.
At school, in his backpack.
So—in terms of your—this specific question, the question would actually relate back to whether this occurred in the home, whether the firearm is specifically locked in the home. So in this circumstance, other restrictions would apply, other state laws would apply. This specific ordinance would only apply if it relates to storage in a residence.
So what if, upon investigation, the police department learns that the gun that was in the backpack at school came from an unlocked environment in his home—or her home?
I can answer that.
Thank you.
Jamie Knox, Police Chief. So typically, any crime involving a firearm, the police department's going to be contacted. We will investigate it, and we can attach appropriate charges as we uncover evidence that would support those charges. And in this case, if there was evidence that the municipal ordinance was also violated, then we can add that as a charge and take enforcement action.
In this case, civil penalties?
Correct. Well, depends on the council's prerogative.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Haskey?
Well, I guess it's a little—it's the same question as Cindy only—it's a kind of different—she used the example of, we understood there was a gun in the family. And the fact that the penalties get larger and larger the number of times you do it, and I don't know what the time period is, is that within one year or whatever? But my question is, how the heck do we know that it is unlocked and unprotected without going and knocking on everybody's door? And when is this really—I understand, nobody hates guns more than I do. I can tell you, let's start with that premise. I'd ban them the whole—the whole shoot and match. Bad, bad choice of words. But it just doesn't seem real practical to just have this on the books if there's, you know, no way we know how to catch the people who are ignoring it.
Well, this would be probably primarily a reactive enforcement measure, but I think the spirit of the ordinance would be to encourage gun safety and encourage people to protect their firearms in a way that unauthorized people would not have access to it, because what we're seeing is a lot of guns on the street. Almost half of them now seem to be illegally manufactured guns, but still a lot of guns out on the street illegally are the result of, you know, ill-gotten gains from residential burglaries or car burglaries because people are not storing their firearms properly.
So you would then trace the gun back to the license, back to the person that should have done that, and fine them?
We could potentially do that, but again, I would go back to the spirit of this, I think, would be to educate the public and to prevent people from getting harmed by firearms that fall into the wrong hands. That's my perspective at least, says the chief.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wolf?
I just had one on the exception for the immediate control and possession of an individual. Has that been teased out through case law or any kind of regulations?
Not that we have seen, however, in staff review of number of similar ordinances adopted throughout California. The ones that I reviewed were up to 19. California cities have adopted very similar ordinances with similar language and exceptions. The latest number I saw was up to 41 cities in California have adopted very similar safe storage firearms ordinances. That specific language I've not seen teased out in terms of what constitutes immediate, but in sort of our—in the drafting of the ordinance, the intent was generally that we would consider proximity to the person in determining whether the firearm was in their immediate control or possession. And if it is—
That's my understanding as well. So it is a little nuanced when you talk about possession. Legally, there's different types of possession. I believe the intent would be actual possession, and immediate control typically is within someone's reach, lunge, or grab.
So this would be people that are awake, not sleeping, I would imagine?
That would be my interpretation. However, I don't think—to your point—I don't think that specific element has necessarily been teased out. But again, ultimately, the discretion would be with the police department on whether or not we wanted to file charges on something. If it was an egregious violation, we would take enforcement action. But again, the spirit of this would be to encourage people to store their firearms properly.
And if it were a case of self-defense, or had been proven to be self-defense, likely not file charges?
Absolutely, and I'm a gun owner myself, and, you know, we would certainly encourage people to protect their home and their family, but to do it in a very responsible way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I don't think we have any other question. Oh, Councilmember Darling?
Since we've got our chief talking, there are other ordinances that are—like, people that have a burglar alarm are supposed to have a permit from the City of Walnut Creek PD for that burglar alarm. And you don't check burglar alarms, you just wait for somebody to get too many false alarms before you let them know that they should do that.
We do have an alarm management program, but I don't believe we actively audit residences to see who has applied for a permit and who hasn't. No. Typically, when you purchase a firearm in California, we have some of the strictest laws in the nation when it comes to background checks. Now, you're even required to, when you leave the premise of a—an authorized dealer with a firearm after your background check is cleared, you have to have the firearm in a locked container or with a locking device on it that is DOJ-approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Wolf. We'll open up the public comment period, and I would invite any folks here that would like to make comments. Please, if you can, at some point, fill out a yellow speaker card and hand it to the clerk. You'll have two minutes to make your comments, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and council members. My name is Jeff Alfond. I had no intention of coming to this meeting this morning at 5:30 in the morning, but I happen to dress in the colors of my former agency, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. So I have as much experience as Chief Knox when I address this topic. I think you're looking at a resolution which is well-intentioned but impractical to implement, first of all. Several cities—I believe Arinda enacted a similar ordinance, and due to numerous lawsuits has dropped their ordinance. The situation of the homeowner and under control when they're asleep, so nebulous, you're inviting situations which you may not envision. And therefore, I would suggest that you not enact this ordinance. Gun safety is a critical issue. The tragic events recently are more due to the mental health issues, and, for instance, family members not being proactive. Unfortunately, I'll bring up Miles Hall, and the family members probably ultimately have ultimate responsibility for the tragic event. So I would encourage you to abandon this ordinance.
Next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Janie Dobbs. As you can see, I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America with the local Greater Mountain Diablo group. Nicole Sue, our lead, has been working with you to get a safe storage ordinance passed here. She asked me to join you today because she is on vacation with her family right now and cannot be here. But I need to tell you that we are extremely pleased to learn that a safe storage ordinance is being considered this evening, because, as we all know, guns are now the leading cause of death of children in the U.S. Researchers at the University of Michigan found that firearm-related deaths among children and teens have surged a staggering 30%. So far, in 2022, at least 653 children and teens have been killed by guns. Another 1,609 have been injured, according to the Gun Violence Archive. And over 80% of school mass shootings in K-12 schools, the perpetrator did acquire this gun from—that was unsecured—from the home or that of relatives. Your action tonight will circumvent the possibility of our children becoming a part of these dismal statistics. Thank you for strengthening State Penal Code 25100, which is deficient, because it does not apply to all homes, and it does not specifically define what safe storage is. Your ordinance would address these loopholes. We urge you to adopt the ordinance with a civil penalty. We believe this ordinance should be modeled—I just have one more—two more sentences—in the spirit of safety laws enacted in the eighties. We believe that most gun owners in Walnut Creek are responsible and will comply with this once it is in place. The purpose of this law is to keep guns out of the hands of our children, not to punish gun owners. Again, I want to thank you, and I just want to urge you to apply a civil penalty like a fine or community service.
Thank you, ma'am. I gave you a few extra sentences. So reminder that two minutes will sneak up on you quickly, but thank you for coming and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and city council members. My name is Lori Herbert, and I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. As we all know, in the last few weeks, we've been rocked by a daily barrage of mass shootings in which guns have gotten into the wrong hands. If it seems like the frequency is increasing, you're right, and what we hear in the news is just the tip of the iceberg. Nearly 120 Americans die by gun violence every single day. Nearly two-thirds of them are suicides, and firearms are now the number-one cause of death for American children and teens. In every single case, a gun got into the wrong hands. The number-one predictor of gun violence is easy access to guns. It's time for us to stop making it so easy for that to happen. How do we do that? The first most fundamental way can be—the first most fundamental way can be accomplished right here. We fully support your safe storage ordinance that will address the loopholes of the state law. It will save lives by blocking access to the wrong hands, including curious children, those suffering from mental illness, domestic abusers, and folks just going through a tough spell in their lives. Passing this ordinance with a civil penalty will be a beacon for cultural change, just like seatbelt laws, smoking ordinances, and helmets for bicyclists. Once passed, a robust educational campaign about secure storage with free gun locks made available from the police department can incentivize safer behavior and save lives. Speaking of educational campaigns, huge kudos and respect for the excellent safe storage PSA produced by this body and the former mayor, Kevin Wilk. It was expertly done, highly effective, and exactly what we need in every community across the nation. Bravo for your life-saving initiatives, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Next speaker?
I'm a veteran. I was in the Army for 21 years. I spent three years as lieutenant and captain inspecting infantry firearms. Every day of the year, every infantry arms room is inventoried by number. Every weapon has a number. Every weapon is lobbed up in very specific, highly intense metal racks. I'm also a cultural anthropologist, and I agree with what Chief Knox said about the spirit of the law. I think this is—our country has become embedded in a culture of confusion and all sorts of misinformation, all sorts of frustration about what's really going on. And I think the idea of educating and training gun owners and the general public is a very key part. You want to start with awareness. Help people become aware of what are the nuts and bolts of gun ownership and consequences. So I really think that what you're doing is very, very admirable. We need to have this ordinance. The civil aspect of it is probably the good way to start. Get people so that they can hear you, not be afraid, not feel threatened, and please continue with your great leadership.
Ma'am, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Sarah Proctor, and I've been a resident here for 16 years. I'm a resident of Rosmore.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Dobbin. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek and a mother. In March of this year, I was one of the Moms Demand Action volunteers that asked you to consider adopting a safe storage ordinance in our city. I'm here tonight to thank you for your response and to ask you to please vote in favor of the version of the ordinance with civil penalties. As we all know, gun violence is an epidemic in our country, and we are working at all levels—local, state, and federal—to prevent it. The objective of safe storage ordinances is to encourage responsible gun ownership behavior, ultimately preventing the wrong people from accessing firearms. Let's change the conversation about gun ownership and make safe storage of firearms as common as wearing a seatbelt or not smoking in public. The data shows safe storage ordinances save lives. It's time for Walnut Creek to pass an ordinance and promote a culture of gun safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. I'm Lisa Delano, and I'm a resident of Concord, but I did live here in Walnut Creek for 20 years, and we still own our home, and my son lives there with his family and my two grandsons. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action because I believe we can reduce gun violence by passing gun sense laws and creating a culture of gun safety. Thank you for considering this safe storage ordinance. This will encourage responsible gun ownership and keep guns out of the hands of children and burglars and those who intend to harm themselves. In passing the safe firearm storage ordinance, you would be following the path chosen by California's biggest cities—San Francisco, LA, San Diego, and San Jose, and also several local towns. With the adoption—with this adoption, you would be a shining example to other towns, just as you did with the flavored tobacco that you're very proud of, and this would be something you would be proud of, too. We hope that safe storage will become as common as wearing a seatbelt, and so please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm O.G. Strogatz. I live in Walnut Creek and I am proud to offer comments tonight in support of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America regarding the proposed gun storage ordinance. I thank the City Council and staff for taking the initiative to prepare and implement this important ordinance. I ask the City Council to vote in favor of the version of the ordinance with civil, not criminal, penalties. The overall goal of these local gun storage ordinances should be to encourage responsible gun ownership behavior, ultimately preventing the wrong people from accessing firearms. We seek to raise awareness about and to encourage a culture of gun safety. The goal is not to punish people with criminal penalties that often lead to a disproportionate impact of arrests and incarceration in communities of color. I appreciate your leadership on this crucial issue and look forward to your voting unanimously in favor of the version of the ordinance with civil penalties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strogatz.
Good evening. I have given my, my name is Ramin Darashian. I'm just an individual and a father. I have had a hard time putting my arms around rehearsing this, so bear with me. The problem is that responsible gun owners and gun reformers are so far apart, whereas they actually should be together because nobody's trying to take away gun owners' gun. So I'd like to propose and ask the city of Walnut Creek to be the first in the nation to put a series of forum, whereas these posts, both sides could come together, discuss, and be the first in the nation to start this discussion. And you'd think this would be a small effort, but you'd be amazed how such a small effort could have at least effect. It may not solve our problem that our elected officials have not moved on this for a long time, but you'd be amazed how much of an improvement this could have, at least as an individual, citizen, and some elected officials. You, as a father, as a mother, as a cousin, we all have responsibility to our generation, future generation, and our great, great grandchildren. So that's all I'd like to ask you to do that. And if you're willing to, I'm even willing to help us to do the arrangement of this and you'd be amazed of what are the ripple effect that this could have. I appreciate your time on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lindsay Vignoles. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I'm also a mother of three children. I've lived here for the past 13 years with my family. Gun violence is an epidemic in this country. For any of you who may be in doubt, I give you this recent and sobering statistic. Thirty mass shootings have occurred since the massacre in Uvalde that took 21 lives. I'll give you a minute to let that sink in. So we are working. We are taking action. We are working alongside our elected officials, like all of you. We're working alongside our police officers and chiefs, like you. We're working with our school leaders. We're working with our friends. We're working with our own children to find ways to keep our communities from being shattered by gun violence, from keeping our community from being the next Uvalde, which is a very real possibility. Here in Walnut Creek, we are standing up to do something and we are asking that you help us do that something. I want to thank you very much for considering this important ordinance and encourage you all to vote in favor of it. With the civil penalties, as many of my fellow volunteers have articulated, the overall goal of these local ordinances is to encourage responsible gun ownership. It is not to punish those that have guns or to deny them their ability to protect themselves in their homes. It will take time for these safe storage ordinances to be widely understood and to be adhered to, but we are no stranger to this fact. We know that it takes time. Seatbelts took time. Smoking took time. I'm sure the chewing tobacco thing took time, too. We must start somewhere, Council. We believe that time is now and it starts with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Francois and Council. My name is Sharice Count. I'm a resident of the city of Walnut Creek, a parent of two, and a member of the Mount Diablo Unified School District School Board. I am here tonight to thank you for, for having this ordinance on your agenda to take action on at such a crucial time. Just last month, a gun was brought onto campus, onto school grounds at my own kid's school, and it was very frightening. It, it makes you question as a, as a parent and, and as a student, you know, is my kid going to be safe going to school the next day when we know how easy it is for that to happen? And we know that gun violence is not just something that we are concerned about within a school campus. It has happened just in the last few months in our neighborhoods, on our streets, by students who are under the age of 18. We also know that most of the time when someone under the age of 18 has access to a gun, it's because they got it from their own home or from the home of a neighbor or a friend. I think the number is like 80% of the time, right? So this action is real. It's important. It will make a difference. And you asked how we can get the word out about this. I would look forward to working with the city from the side of the school board and school district to get the word out. When that gun incident happened on the school campus, we held a town hall at the school site the next day. And, and you know, we're working in conjunction with the city and the, and the police. It would have been fantastic to use that moment to be able to say, and here is the city ordinance and here are the free gun locks. And that's something that was done in the city of Dublin. They give out the free gun locks as a way to also educate for the need for these things. So I encourage you to pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Hi. I understand that it is a requirement that a gun that is bought legally. Now, I understand the guns that are stolen, doesn't apply to guns that are, are sold with the locks. What you're telling me is you're giving the locks to people who already have locks and I'm confused about that a little bit, too.
I've just seen that as something that the city of Dublin has done very effectively in terms of getting the word out. I don't know if it's about, you know, guns that were sold, you know, that people have owned for a longer period of time than, than that rule has been in effect, but, but I thought it was an effective way to also educate the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Count. Let's see, do we have any other speakers in the chamber that would have liked to address the counsel on this item? Not seeing any, so anybody on Zoom?
We do have a handful of speakers on Zoom. We'll bring in Rachel Shapiro.
Good evening, Ms. Shapiro. Are you with us?
Hi. Good evening, Council members. I think I accidentally joined as a panelist. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
I apologize. Thank you. This is my first time attending, so bear with me. I felt compelled by this topic of gun safety to join today. My family and I have lived in Walnut Creek since 2015. I have two boys. My older son, Ethan, is seven, and my younger son, Teddy, is almost three years old. My older son attends public school here in Walnut Creek. I'm here to, to thank the council for considering this important ordinance and hope that you all vote in favor of the version with civil penalties. In listening to discussion tonight, I have a few thoughts, which I hopefully can articulate clearly. As the police chief mentioned, if guns are stored correctly, it can have a myriad of positive effects, such as potentially helping guns from getting into the wrong hands. And if stored correctly in the residence, for example, it might not have ended up in a backpack at school, resulting in a tragic event or even a traumatic event. I think in general, having an ordinance like this helps to speak to everyone and have common knowledge generally about what is necessary for practicing gun safety. Like seatbelts, we don't check every car every day to see if folks are wearing seatbelts, but they are part of many laws that are public knowledge and reduce motor vehicle morbidity. Just like one gun law isn't going to solve every gun issue, this gun law is an important step to gun safety for everyone, reducing gun incidents. Safely storing firearms in residences is a good step to feeling more safe for myself and my children. Again, thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate the moment to have the floor. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Carly Magnus.
Hello, Ms. Magnus. Are you with us? And unmuted.
Hi. I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong button. I apologize.
It happens. Hi.
Good evening, Council members and community members. My name is Carly Magnus. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action and I live in unincorporated Lafayette. However, I am across the street from Walnut Creek. We shop in Walnut Creek. We have friends in Walnut Creek and my two eight-year-old children play in Walnut Creek. I'm attending this meeting to thank the council for considering the gun storage ordinance. I think it's extremely important. We all deserve safety from guns and it's one action in a series of actions that we can take. I do want to say that I think it's critical that we adopt a version with civil penalties. The goal of the ordinance should not be to punish people with criminal penalties, but to change the culture of gun safety. We want gun laws to be as safe and effective as seatbelts, but not a tool to target individuals based on their skin color or other economic factors. Strong communities keep all family members safe, all families safe, and this requires looking at the issue from all angles. Please ensure that this ordinance isn't, doesn't have counterproductive consequences, which may be arrests or incarcerations that disproportionately affect non-white community members. Let's work together to end all forms of gun violence. And I want to just end by remembering Miles Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Magnus. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Christopher Jones.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Jones. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I have two young daughters and I grew up in a family of gun owners. I would like to thank the council for considering this important safe storage ordinance and hope that you all vote in favor of this version with civil penalties. Safe storage ordinances are important to create a culture of responsible gun ownership. Children can easily find firearms that adults may think are hidden away. I myself was able to find and handle guns stored in my home as a child. Fortunately, there were no tragic consequences. This local ordinance will help clarify how to safely store firearms and encourage a culture of gun safety in Walnut Creek. Please support this version of the ordinance with civil penalties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Catherine Jones.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Great. My name is Catherine Jones and I have lived here in Walnut Creek for 10 years and I have two young children. And I would also like to thank the council for considering this safe storage ordinance and hope that you vote in favor of the version with civil penalties. As we heard, this local ordinance will fill some important gaps in the state law. For example, many people think they've put their firearm in a reasonable, secure location as is required by the state law, but children and teens could still access the guns. And again, the goal of the local ordinance is to encourage a culture of responsible gun ownership in Walnut Creek by providing a reminder and specific guidelines on secure storage. And we support civil, not criminal penalties for these violations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Next speaker is Catherine Wally.
Hello. Can you see or hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Wally. Good evening.
Okay. I'm not sure why my video is, is off, but I'll go ahead. Good evening, Council. I'm Catherine Wally, resident of Walnut Creek. When I was a middle schooler living in Texas, I was given the opportunity to debate a constitutional issue. I chose to debate in support of establishing sensible gun safety measures. With a binder full of legal and research-based arguments alongside counterpoints to my opposition, I argued that Second Amendment constitutional rights must be balanced with other constitutional commitments, including those interests and rights which are imperiled by gun violence and a lack of meaningful gun safety regulations. Three decades and countless gun deaths later, I am as convinced as ever that our lives, liberties, and safety are threatened by our failure to enact such measures. That said, my understanding has become a bit more nuanced since I was 13. Principally, I've come to understand the necessity of applying an equity framework in such matters. As Jeffrey Swanson writes, "When creating public policy, saving lives from gun violence matters, but ensuring that lives saved are also respected. Pre- form racial oppression, afforded equal justice also matters." While I support a safe storage ordinance, we must avoid creating unintended harms in the process. We must, as Swanson writes, "Remember that the origin story of many U.S. firearms restrictions and the continuing disparities in their enforcement and implementation are intertwined in the legacy of systemic racial discrimination in policing and criminal justice in the United States. I stand in opposition to an ordinance that would contain criminal punishments, including jail time as outlined in the initial draft. Instead, I invite you to follow the recommendations of the National LGBTQ Task Force, which advocates on behalf of safe storage laws that do not impose jail time, but instead are paired with the assumption of civil liability. Without criminal penalties, I would be honored to stand in support of an ordinance that fosters a culture of gun safety in our community. Many thanks to you as well as to staff for your work and for your advocacy."
Thank you, Ms. Wally. Good evening. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Kristin.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Peralta and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek and another of two children. This is my first city council meeting and I'm here today because I want to support safe gun laws. So first, I'd like to thank you, the council, for considering this ordinance and for looking for opportunities to take action on this topic. I'm asking that you vote in favor of the ordinance and carefully consider whether a civil penalty versus a criminal penalty would be more effective to accomplish the goal of encouraging smart gun ownership. As the police chief mentions, guns that are left, you know, that are left available end up being taken, they're moved into the wrong hands, as some of the Moms Demand Action parents shared, these guns end up being used by children against children. We just don't want those unintended consequences. The spirit of this, as I understand it, is really to normalize safe gun culture and I'm concerned that a criminal penalty will unfairly penalize gun owners and cause debate and distract from the primary spirit, which is really to and distract from the primary spirit, which is really to promote and normalize safe storage and make it as easy to talk about safe storage as it is to remind a friend to wear a helmet or wear a seatbelt or not to drink and drive. If we can make it a normal conversation that doesn't need to be contested, then as a community, we can help to enforce these, the ordinance and increase adoption. Thank you for your attention to this issue.
Thank you for calling into the first council, your first council meeting. Hope to see you again. Any other speakers?
Our last speaker is Scott.
Good evening, are you able to hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Hewitt. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I just wanted to speak up, ask the council to vote against this ordinance. To me, it just seems unnecessary, as there's already penal codes in existence which deal mostly with this. Sounds like most people are interested in education. I 100% agree with that. I think if we were to provide education, whether outreach, having maybe reach out to the NRA, having them come speak to people, as well as any sort of booths at public events, speaking to people, sending out flyers, that sort, about the safety of proper storage. I do have some questions I would ask if this were to be looked at further, is how would it be enforced? Would it be doing door checks? Would the police department be writing search warrants to go into homes, which, if it's just an infraction, might prove to be some legal issues? I would also ask the question of if the gun locks would be able to prevent the theft of guns, if it's a simple, plastic gun lock. And then I would also ask that it's looked at for the cities who have passed similar ordinances, the gun violence and gun theft both prior and after such ordinance passed. And that is all I have at this time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Any other comments?
No additional speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item. Do we have any, any other questions? We haven't heard from Sergeant Connors at all, or Chief Knox, or Ms. Wolf. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Connors.
I was gonna let you call me whatever.
Don't, no, you shouldn't do that. I make them call me mayor, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can address the question about the search warrant. We do not write search warrants for civil matters.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other questions of PD or...
I have quick questions, actually, just responding to one of the speakers regarding ordinances that this has been adopted at in our region. I know that Arinda was. I wanted to find out, did Arindas get dropped? And are there other cities that have adopted it and that it's in effect now?
I don't know the answer to that question.
You know, I spoke to the mayor of Arinda maybe in the last six months, and she gave no indication that they had repealed or rescinded their ordinance.
I hadn't heard that.
I don't know definitively that they haven't, but she didn't say anything.
In accordance to their municipal code, the ordinance is still, is still there.
There you go.
And any other cities also that have adopted this? Something similar?
Ally, can you, do you have a list of a few of the cities nearby that have adopted similar ordinances?
Yes, a few of the cities would be Dublin, Pleasanton, Antioch, most recently, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, South San Francisco, Alameda. I could go on, but I will stop there.
That's very good, right up there. Thank you. Those are my questions.
May I address the last caller?
Please.
Thank you very much. Holly Connors, Lieutenant, Walnut Creek Police Department. I wanted to just correct some accuracies. There is currently nothing that addresses this gap, and that's the need for the ordinance. There's nothing addressing leaving a gun in a home where children may not be present. The penal code addresses only when children may be present. And so this is a lesson in educating, and I just want to provide some data that might clarify some things for you. Thank you. So in the past 10 years, we've had 37 residential burglaries where firearms were taken. Seventy-four guns total. So sometimes there were three guns, four guns. Of all of those cases, 55% of these were unsecured firearms. So a safe or a gun lock doesn't guarantee that it's not going to be stolen from your home, but it may help someone who's in your home not get themselves into a situation where it's used in a manner where it causes bodily injury or death. So that's really the spirit. We've talked about the spirit of this ordinance tonight, and that's really what it is, is to educate the public. And I wanted to also let you know that some of the victims we spoke with gave statements saying, oh, I didn't know I had to lock up these antique guns. My grandpa left me. I had no idea. I don't even know if they work. Well, now they're stolen and they're out in who knows where. So I believe that education is the most important component of this, and the civil penalties, if adopted that way, are so nominal that it's not such a, it's not such a hard slap, it's more of an education.
Thank you, Lieutenant Connors.
Can I add just one thing, just for the benefit of the public? So if I remember correctly, DOJ has something like 1,800 different qualified gun security devices that are approved, and I believe even Amazon has a list that you can go to. The technology is so much better now than it ever has been with storage devices that would allow a gun owner very quick access via biometric identification or a very quick combination code. So I don't think this would be overreaching or prevent any sort of Second Amendment rights, especially with the new technology and the gun safe and locking gun storage devices available to the public now.
There's also a proposed provision where you can report your gun stolen. You have five days to do so with no penalty, no civil penalty, because we do not want to discourage people who realize their gun is stolen from their home to not call and report that to the police department.
Mayor Protem Silva, you had a question?
One of the comments was that you could still steal a gun and break the lock.
I think the caller mentioned a plastic lock. I know of no such device. Every device that is lawful in California as a gun storage device or a gun safety device has to be DOJ-approved, and I can't think of, there might be a plastic component of it, but certainly metal components as well that would prevent unauthorized access without some sort of key.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Thank you. So we have a couple of different options tonight. We can receive this report and then provide direction to come back at a future hearing with an ordinance with civil or criminal penalties. We could introduce the ordinance and wave reading and introduce the ordinance and take action tonight with the same options, or we could take no action. So with those options before you, what say you, council member darling?
Well, let's start this off with, you know, my family are a hunting and fishing family. I grew up with guns. My husband grew up with guns. He thought by marrying me, he was going to get preferential deer tags, and he did not. Our kids learned how to shoot when they were little, but this is the kind of law that we need. There's a, there is a, you know, growing up, safely storing your guns was part of the hunting ethic that we grew up with. And there's a carelessness and a cavalierness about guns in some people that really scares me and makes me very uncomfortable. So I would be very interested in moving this ordinance forward quickly. Let me give you a couple examples from, of how it can be useful. My father was starting to develop dementia, and he was starting to imagine people were trying to get him. And I had to have a very real conversation with my mother about the fact that it was no longer safe to have the guns in the house, because he could not be trusted with it when he was having, you know, challenges. An ordinance like this would have been very useful to say, Mom, look, he is no longer trustworthy, we have to lock the guns up, we have to take them out of the house. Instead, we had to have a long conversation. It's also useful in families where, you know, guns have come into the family. You know, Luel, you mentioned the possibility of, well, it's a new gun, it should come with a lock. All the handguns and whatnot in our family have been there 20, 30 years. There are no, you know, when our children came along, there were no locks on anything, and we had to go through and retrofit everything. So this is an ordinance that has a real possibility of saving a life, and it has a real possibility of helping people realize that having guns in the house includes a level of responsibility for those weapons and storing them properly and keeping them out of the hands of people that shouldn't have access to them. And so I would want to move this ordinance forward quickly. That's my two cents on this one.
With the civil penalties?
With the civil penalties.
Mayor Protem Silva.
One would hope that people would be responsible when they have something in their home that is as dangerous as a gun. I was once in a jury pool. It was a concealed weapons charge. I was sitting in the front row, and I thought this was a trick question when the defense attorney asked during voir dire, "Who amongst you doesn't think you need to have a gun in your home?" Well, my hand went like this, and mine was the only hand. And he asked me why, and I said, "I don't live in the woods where I need to shoot for my food, and if I have a gun in my house, I am more likely to be hurt by it than to protect myself from it." One, you would hope that it's, that you wouldn't need to do this, but our culture has changed. And I think part of it is a culture of fear. Fear of the unknown, fear that they have to protect themselves, but you can still continue to protect yourself if you're, if you're making a smart move about locking it up or storing it safely. This would, this ordinance would allow, give us an opportunity for a platform to educate. It is difficult to educate without some teeth and potential. And I appreciate, by the way, the voices of our police department in this subject tonight, because no one wants to show up at a horrific incident where it could have been somehow protected and prevented. Yes, I would support the, civil?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but I quite frankly would throw the book at somebody who allows a child to get at a gun.
Councilmember Wilk.
Well, gun violence, as we've seen, has tragically been in the news in this past month, and although I'm not sure, we've seen a pause in gun violence at all in the last 20 years or even longer, but recent horrific events obviously have brought it to the forefront again. And this is something that the city council has spoken out about in, on for several years, and I'm relieved to see that we can finally address something at this level now locally. Keeping guns out of the wrong hands is something I think that we can all agree upon. Safe storage and ensuring that only authorized gun users have access to guns is one common sense way of being able to reduce potential accidents, crimes, and ultimately tragedies. The idea is not to criminalize owners and households, and I'm so glad to have heard from so many speakers on this exact topic, that this is about education and promoting how safe storage of guns saves lives, and I hope that we continue to promote this wherever we can. I personally have known three people who have died at the hands of their own guns, two of whom could have been saved with this ordinance, one of whom happened to go into her house and she surprised a burglar who found her gun, shot her, and killed her. That is just one example of, I'm sure, hundreds of thousands of examples that have happened over the last 20, 30 more years. I wish we could do more to be able to reduce access to guns. I wish that cities could take this into their hands and do that. And thankfully, California has stricter gun laws than many of the other states, and federal and state laws only allow cities a little latitude in this area. But change can start here, and we've seen it before with things that, that are just as broad-based, whether it's climate action or different things that we can do with these kind of local levels and start that ball rolling. Plastic bags was one of them. Here's guns that we can actually do something about. Grassroots efforts of enacting ordinances for safe gun storage can impact our region and state and eventually country, and we can get this ball rolling across the entire country potentially. I appreciate so much the members of the public weighing in on this, especially staying for several hours to get to this ordinance after everything that we've already talked about and supporting the civil penalties as opposed to a criminal penalty. And I do want to just quickly state, because one of the speakers did speak, did mention, he was opposed to this ordinance and he's left now, but he put the name Miles Hall out there, which had nothing, nothing to do with safe storage. And to then go on and criticize the parents as being responsible was just heinous. These parents have been through so much and were trying to move positively speaking. I just wanted to say that that had nothing to do with gun safe, gun storage safety, and let's take that first step and help to make everyone's life safer. I'll enthusiastically approve this and happily make the motion to approve when it comes time on the civil penalties. And I will happily second it.
Councilmember Askew.
Yeah, I bet you all thought I was gonna say no and I wasn't gonna support it. Ha ha. I'm gonna support it, of course I am. We aren't gonna stop the gun mentality in our country, and the best we can do is encourage, is encourage thoughtful behavior and get it out of, out of carelessness anyhow. It isn't gonna solve the problem, but it is a step forward, and I really, really, truly am grateful that we're going to make this step forward.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for the civil discourse over this item. I think we need more of that in our country now more than ever. I, I too grew up in a home that had a firearm. My father was a reserve police officer. He kept it stored safely in a lockbox, and as children, I always understood that that was often, I knew where it was, and that was a forbidden area not to go toward or touch or tinker in any way. So this was before there was an ordinance. Unfortunately, I appreciate Lieutenant Connors highlighting some of those statistics where 55% of the guns that were recovered were not secured. And so I think that speaks volumes to me in terms of the need for this type of ordinance. We have a, the council has adopted a priority for public safety and social wellness, and one of the statistics that was in the staff report highlighted how many of gun violence were involved in suicides. And I think that's something that we shouldn't lose sight of. The unspeakable school tragedies are just horrific and make me question sort of what country I'm living in. And where a 10-year-old girl is getting a gold star for saving, you know, sacrificing her life to save others in her classroom by calling 911. It's, it's up, you know, we can do only so much as this city council, but I expect a lot more of the people that are representing us in Washington, D.C., and it's way past time for them to enact meaningful gun control laws. I appreciated the comment that said, "Look at this issue from all angles," and to have, you know, that our, our goal and our mission is to keep people safe, that first and foremost, whether it's wildfires, gun safety, and I think law enforcement coming in strongly in support of this is really important to me as well. And so I am going to beat you to the punch and wave reading and introduce the ordinance for the safe storage ordinance with the civil penalties.
I'll second.
Can I just, can I just go back to what I heard so many people say that is really, really, really important? Not only do we pass this, but we seriously educate people about its being in existence. And I, I, you know, how do we, how do we include that in what we're doing?
The council could just add that to your direction, and we could... The council could just add that to your direction, and we could advise the council on the process that we would follow for that public outreach.
Well, I recommend we do that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think that's really important, and we've got terrific, Betsy Burkhart being our marketing manager on that, and I did a PSA last year, you can do a PSA. There's a lot we can do, and education starts with us.
I think highlighting it in the nutshell in the mayor's update, to the extent we can have a flyer at the farmer's market, I, that's a really good point.
And I think Chief Knox is correct that many people haven't looked at this issue lately, and they're not as familiar with the biometric, you know, you can have your gun in a safe at home, and you can open that within two seconds with your fingerprints. And that's, that takes away many of the arguments that people who have it for self-defense. So I think including that in the education is an important part of this.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And then just, just for clarification of the city attorney, then this would come back in two weeks for second reading on, on the consent calendar?
That is correct, mayor.
Okay. All right. That was our last item for the evening, and so we are now adjourned.